I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting, January 16, 2007, 5:30, Administration Room 1900 Price Road. Would we all please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
For such allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Justice's pledge?
Honor, respect, and justice for all.
Moving on to item four, roll call. Mr. Aguilar will not be attending this meeting. He's having health problems. And Mr. Lehman called. He'll be a little bit late, but he is on his way. Moving on to item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of January 16, 2007. Any corrections, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Yes, under closed meeting, under personnel matters, item 822, pages 244 is to be replaced in pages 244A through 244E or to be included as part of the agenda backup. Also, item 823, page 245 is to be replaced in pages 245A through 245D or to be included as part of the agenda backup. And I think you all received those already. Also, on conference presentation, under A1, conference presentation, presentation by UBS on the bond, issuance of bond, just received a call from the person who's going to do the performance. He couldn't get a flight out of Dallas due to ice, so we're going to pull it and reschedule it. And also, I would like, with permission from the board, to move item D20 to, after public audience, right before item number 11. And this is due to the fact that the person, if you have any question concerning that item, the person needs to get a flight back. And due to possible flight cancellations, he needs to get to the airport as soon as possible. So with your permission, I'd like to move item D20 to right before item A11.
Mr. Cortez, do you have any other corrections to this agenda?
Yeah, I didn't get to pull item 29 on time. I had two similar items and I needed to pull 29.
Okay, Mr. Colunga?
Yes, I had a correction on one of the items on, under consent agenda, A15, correction on the spelling of Valley, it should be El Valle. I dropped the Y's.
Any other corrections or additions to this agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Motion, Mrs. Galvano, have a second? Second, Mr. Powell, in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, with the exception of the members that are not present. Moving on to superintendent's report, A conference presentation, number two, I'm sorry. Moving on to item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 19, 2006. Any corrections? Any corrections to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to accept the minutes.
Motion, Mrs. Galvano, have a second? Second, Mr. Parrish, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to superintendent's report, A conference presentation two, recognition of chess participants for national chess tournament, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. You know, it's always a pleasure to do positives in this district. The chess program is one of the most positive things we've got going. This allows for kids to really excel and be able to perform to the very, very best. And we're real proud of our chess program and we thank the board for allowing us to have the program that we have. I think this is probably one of the best in the state, definitely one of the best in the valley. And we have some kids to present today, and I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Berta Peña to go ahead and introduce this agenda item. Ms. Peña?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Stephen Scholl and Merrill Hammons, who will be making this presentation for us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Board President, Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Gonzalez, member of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. On December 8th of 2006, the National Scholastic K-12 Collegiate Chess Championship was held at Lake Buena Vista, Florida. Two BISD chess teams participated in this prestigious event, earning national awards. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Stephen Scholl, BISD academic UIL and chess coordinator, to present the award-winning teams, their parents, coaches, and principals. Mr. Scholl.
Thank you, Mr. Hammons. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. In the elementary school division from Amerigo Paredes Elementary, we have fourth graders Fernando Spada, Mario L. Gomez, and Alejandro Flores. Fernando Spada tied for third place in the nation in the fourth grade individual category. And along with Mario L. Gomez and Alejandro Flores, these three students placed third in the nation as a team in the fourth grade category. Next, also from Paredes Elementary, we have fifth graders James Ukali, Ian Santos, and Kyle Benjamin Valdez.
If I may interrupt for just a minute, board members, if you would like, we'd like to congratulate all the students at the end, but to all the baskets here in front, it's going to be hard for them. If you want to join us down there before we continue with the presentation.
These three students placed fourth in the nation as a team in the fifth grade category. At this time, I would also like to recognize their coaches, Harold Hernandez and Maria Argüés, and their principal, Mr. Jay Harris. In the high school division from Homer Hanna High School, we have seniors Juan Yu and Alan Juan Yu placed third in the nation in the 12th grade individual category. And along with team member Alan Gracia, these two students placed 10th in the nation as a team in the 12th grade category. Also from Hanna, our sophomores Eduardo Lopez Jr., Christopher Peña, and Christian Sacco. These three students placed fourth in the nation as a team in the 10th grade category. Congratulations. I would also like to recognize their coaches, Nelda Rogers and Juan J. Garza, and their principal, Mrs. Yolanda Kruger. At this time, if there are any parents of these students, would you please stand and In closing, I would like to thank the board for your continued support of the BISD chess program. Thank you.
Moving on to item three, donation presented by Mr. and Mrs. Johnny Cavazos. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. We always like donations, especially when it helps students. Whenever we have the opportunity to take donations, we like to recognize those people that do that. And to introduce this presentation, I'll call Mr. Lorenzo Sanchez.
Mr. Gonzalez, board members, I don't see the donors or donors there. At this time, let me just give you a brief history. 2001, Mr. Cavazos and his wife Nina gave us $25,000, gave us another $25,000 in '03, and '04 gave us $50,000. And just recently, right before the end of the year, he came over and gave me a check for another $50,000, which brings the total endowment to $157,911,000. This is to be commended. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Rodriguez. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. President, members of the board, administration. Four years back, I approached the board to ask permission to set up a wall of honor. And our goal was, at that time, $100,000 to gather and make a perpetual endowment for our student athletes and our students here at Brownsville. And at that time, the board gave me permission to establish some recognition at Sam Stadium next to the picture of Mr. Earl C. Sam's. And as I walked off from the podium, Mr. Cavazos happened to be here and mentioned to me, he says, "I'll get you there." I didn't know what he meant because in the transition of the board, whatever, but shortly after that, he came to my office and we worked out a situation to where he gave us the first $25,000. He continued to give us another $25,000 and $50,000. And at that time, we reached our goal and set up the parameters of the scholarships to be given, which will begin in May of our graduation time of this year at the Adich High School. And most recently, he came down to present another $50,000 to add to that endowment and so forth. And of course, we're very, very grateful for that. We recognized him at the state conference held here in Brownsville for the first time when all the athletic directors from the state, and I told them about our program and so forth, and received state recognition for that. And the athletic directors throughout the state were very amazed at the situation that we have here of such people that show such graciousness. And I can only say that, I guess in conclusion, that they personify and exemplify all the goodness in our community and all of the good things, and that they lead the way in saying that we're all about kids and so forth. And I guess the most I can say, in quoting the late, great sports writer, Grantland Rice, is that "When the one great scorer comes to write against your name, he shall not write whether you won or lost, but how you played the game." And Mr. and Mrs. Cavazos play the game and exemplify all the goodness that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Johnny Cavazos. Moving on to item four, January 2007 is School Board Recognition Month. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. You know, we choose January, and the state of Texas chose January, as School Board Recognition Month, but it should be recognized every month. School board members do a lot of work. You all don't get paid. You do this because you have a love for children and a love for this district, or else you wouldn't be here. As we go through the month of January, we would like to recognize you. But because we do have a January board meeting, we'd like to even really, really recognize you and really show how much we appreciate what you do. I'm going to read a little proclamation and then ensure that you get the plaque that shows how much we as administration and we as the district care about you all. And then we'll do other presentations. Let me read the proclamation. "Whereas, the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas, local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas, local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas, local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and to the public's expectations of the district. Now therefore, I, Hector Gonzalez, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Brownsville Independent School District School Board and proclaim the month of January 2007 as School Board Recognition Month in the Brownsville Independent School District. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. In official recognition whereof, I here affix my signature on the 16th day of January 2007." Congratulations, school board members, for a job well done. Y'all have your plaques in front of you. At this time, I also, this is not the end of it, you know? Not only do I appreciate you and my staff appreciates you, but there's a lot of people out there in the school district that appreciate everything that you do. There's a lot of work that you all do behind the scenes that really help ensure success for our children. And it's very important for you all to know that there's a lot of people out there that really appreciate what you do. And when we met, we discussed that we could do it during either public audience and take that time, or do it at the most appropriate time, during this particular time. And I invited the schools that were going to be here, and you can see, it's decorated. Those of you that already went into the executive conference room have seen what's in there waiting for you all. We couldn't get it all in the front. But at this time, I'd like to ask the AAs to please say a few words and bring in their principals. They're going to be saying a few words, and we'll start out with Porter Cluster, Ms. Ayala.
Dr. Escobedo, President of the Board, Mr. Gonzalez, Superintendent and board members. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Alonso Barbosa and the Porter Cluster principals. And as you can see, our banner up there consists of 12 campuses. Mr. Barbosa? The Porter Cluster, would please stand up.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Mr. President, Mr. Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen of the board, our AAs. First of all, we come together tonight before you as a cohesive group of committed educators. We come together tonight, not just as administrators representative of our campus, but of the whole community, the community that we serve, which is the Southmost community. We come before you humbly to offer you a small token of appreciation for all that you do throughout the year. And again, for all that you do for our community, we thank you on behalf of the cluster, as well as Ms. Ayala. God bless you and have a great year, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Ms. Montfiles, Lopez Cluster.
Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Dawn Hall, proud principal of Lopez High School, is here on behalf of the Lopez Cluster.
Thank you very much, Ms. Montfiles. The Lopez Cluster Schools and Ms. Montfiles sincerely appreciate all of the support and work that you do on behalf of our children. You do this throughout the year, you do it tirelessly and selflessly, and we appreciate that. We have some recognition also at our school to make our students aware of all that you do for us. Tonight, you will find among your great assortment of treasures, and I know that you have got more things in there, and I can see endless bounty in front of me, a cake from Lucio Middle School, award cards from my school with pictures to show some of the activities that we are able to do due to your largesse, and we sincerely appreciate that, letters from Aiken Elementary, baskets from Morningside, Palm Grove, and Bestado, and banners from Bright, El Jardín, Garza, and Southmost. From the bottom of my heart, I sincerely thank you. The Lopez Lobos always lead the pack, and that's because of you. Thank you.
The Pace Cluster, Mr. Springsteen.
Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, the Pace Cluster would just like to give its sincere appreciation for everything that you have done to work with our schools, not just our cluster, but the district as a whole. We do recognize that fact that we are a big district, and I would like to introduce just a couple of people to say just a few things on our behalf, because we do appreciate everything that you have worked for, everything that you do for us, and everything that you're going to be doing for us in the future and for our children. I'd like to introduce Ms. Lopez, our principal at Ortiz Elementary, and the Student Council President, Pedro Gonzalez.
Pedro?
Good evening, Dr. Enrique Escobedo Jr. and fellow school board members. My name is Pedro Gonzalez, and I am a fifth grade student at U.S. Congressman Salomon P. Ortiz Elementary. I am currently the school's Student Council President. On behalf of the entire student body, principal, faculty, and staff of Ortiz Elementary, I would like to thank you for your commitment towards the success of the students and schools of BISD. As president and representative of our school, I understand the big responsibility that you have at hand. I know that you are faced daily with decisions on how to make our schools better. I myself have the responsibility of making Ortiz Elementary the best school in Brownsville. It's a tough job, but somebody's got to do it. As a representative of our school, I would like to invite all board members to feel free to visit Ortiz Elementary anytime. Thank you once again for uniting with us and making BISD an exceptional district. At this time, we would like to present you with a little token of appreciation.
Hanna and Rivera. So on behalf of Hanna and Rivera, Ms. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, President, Dr. Escobedo, and members of the board. On behalf of the Hanna Cluster and the back and BLA campuses, which were previously members of our clusters, gift baskets have been provided to each of you. These baskets are in appreciation of your service to our community and to our school district. In addition, on behalf of the Rivera Cluster, gift baskets are also provided to honor your dedication to our school district. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Mary Tolman, principal of the Rivera High School. She will introduce two students who have asked to make a brief statement to the Board of Trustees.
Good evening. My name is Mary Tolman. I'm the proud principal of Rivera High School. There's nothing greater than being a raider, and I'm glad we're last, because you always save the best for last. I have two students who are going to come forward. I know you've had a lot of thanks and things like that. Nestor Trevino, he's a senior, one of our great leaders there at Rivera, very involved. Mr. Freddy Uriegas, also a senior, really a great leader as well, has helped out a lot with the community contributions and support for Bernie that we have there at school. So at this time, I'm just going to go ahead and let them speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Mr. Enrique Escobedo, and board members, Mr. Erman Ortiz-Powers Jr., Ms. Susan Galvano, Mr. Joe Colunga, and Mr. Pat Lehman, if he's still here, I don't know if he is present. Welcome. Mr. Rolando Aguilar, I wish him the best, hope he gets well as soon as possible, and Mr. Ruben Cortez. And of course, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Hector Gonzalez.
On behalf of the schools, faculty, staff, parents, and the community of the Rivera High School Cluster, we would like to thank you for your service to the students and teachers of Brownsville.
We realize that many hours are spent away from your family and friends in order to serve the public, although at times you may feel that it is a thankless job. We're here today to show appreciation for the sacrifices you make on our behalf. Thank you.
We have one more, and the curriculum department also wanted to show their appreciation. I'll call Ms. Berta Peña, curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. It's all about curriculum, so I needed to feel part of, not wanting to say thank you for all the hard work that you do, but the program administrators and members and administrators of the curriculum department have a few words in a token of our appreciation from all of us. Thank you. Terri?
Good evening, Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, and members of the board. We thank you for the countless voluntary hours that you provide our district. You surely have to have a heart to give of yourself, of your time, and so on behalf of curriculum and instruction, we say thank you. You are truly champs for BISD, the best in service and dedication. So on behalf of curriculum and instruction, all the program administrators, Ms. Peña, we give you a small token bucket, a snowman bucket, and I think it's very fitting for tonight's weather. So again, thank you.
Let me just conclude, Dr. Escobedo, by saying that all the board members, we truly appreciate the service you provide to this district. Without you, we would not be as successful as we are. We appreciate all the hours that you put in, and I know it takes a lot of time away from your families. It takes a lot of time for you to be here to serve this community of Brownsville, and I want to thank you from the deepest of my heart for everything that you do. I thank you not only for today, but for the entire time that you serve on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and thank all of you for your kind gifts and your very generous words. Would you refer to as a small token, it's actually a very large and mammoth token, it means, to me personally, it means a lot more than you probably imagined, so thank you. Mr. Parrish? Yeah, thank you, President Escobedo. When we get recognized, and I know this is a thankless job out there, but everyone here on this board, all seven of us, plus the superintendent, plus the circle of area superintendents, we're going to do our best. We're only humans. We're going to make mistakes also, but what keeps us going is appreciation at this magnitude. I've been here nine years, I've never seen so many gifts given to the board for something that we believe what we're doing is right. We'll stand up for the employees and this children in this great district. We'll get hit sometimes by the media, sometimes by certain groups of people, but to me, in life, 95% of the people truly believe in what you're doing. And if you can survive that, then you can survive this. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, from me.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Any other comments on the board? Mr. Colunga?
I also wanted to express my gratitude to all of the
I also wanted to express my gratitude to all of the gestures of appreciation on the part of students. It really is something special to get communication from campuses that show the effort made by individual students just to express a message to a board member, and it's really overwhelming all of the gestures that we have received. We certainly appreciate everything that we have received, and I just want to express my gratitude to all who participated in this great event that has been, for me, overwhelming, and just everywhere you look is a gesture of appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colunga, Mrs. Galvan.
Yes, I also wanted to thank everybody for all your kindness, for all your love, and what I could really see tonight was there was a really feeling of unity, a lot of teamwork, a lot of the clusters you could see as a team. Mr. Gonzalez, you know, you have a great team, we're part of your team, and we're all working to move it forward. So thank you so much, and we love you too.
Thank you, Mrs. Galvan. Mr. Cortez?
I just want to thank everybody for, I mean, since I've been here on this school Board, it just, I feel that this district has just kind of opened doors and embraced me, and I want to thank everybody for their hospitality and their generosity, and we're going to continue to do what we feel is right for this district, and I, from the bottom of my heart, I thank everybody for what they've done tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Let me just say that...
Mr. Lehman?
Thank God that we don't have a grievance tonight because there's no room in the conference room. You think this is something, wait until you go into the conference room, so I'm surprised to see that, so this is the best year ever. This is really something else. In the past, we've thanked you, but this is really awesome, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. As much as I'd like to stay on this item, all meeting long, moving on to item five, presentation of the Brownsville County School District financial report for the period ended November 30, 2006, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Column, Mr. Renzo Sanchez to make the presentation. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, more members. I don't have anything to give you other than information, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Your first page on the financial statement is your... I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have on any particular line item.
Questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Lehman?
Just have one. I guess it's page 205, on the food service again. Clarification, the footnote, the asterisk, an amount of $161,552 has been expensed or utility charged back. That's per quarter?
Yes, sir.
It's reflecting now per quarter, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is as of November of last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? If not, moving on to item six, notification of Betterment Fund change orders and contract change orders, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. I've submitted those change orders for you, none of them are to the contractors or either allowances or change orders to the Betterment Fund contingency money that we're using. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions from the Board? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item seven, presentation of bond issue update, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. As you know, we are in the process of getting into the nuts and bolts of the implementation of the bond, and as we go through it, we made a promise that we would provide all the information we could, not only to the Board, but to the general public, and in so doing, the Board also, along with myself, pledged to set up a bond oversight committee. That bond oversight committee was established, and they did meet last Thursday. They selected an interim chairperson in Mr. Bush Bartosa, and they, they're off and running. They've looked at their, they're setting up their bylaws, they're setting up nominations for that. So the bond oversight committee has been established and is moving forward. At that time, we presented to the bond oversight committee. There was a good little audience here. We had a complete presentation of what was going on and what we were doing and what schools were going to be built and where they were going to be built and the rationale why. And I think we got a real good consensus from the bond oversight committee to continue, we're looking in the right areas and to proceed and not delay. Those are good things. Those are all the positive things in the district. As we move forward, we did that, and we also had a presentation to the facilities committee meeting yesterday, and I think it was a very good presentation. And at this time, because of the fact that we need to know where we're going to build the schools and which way we're going, because there's $135 million worth of bonds that are going to be out there, we have pledged to the district we were going to be as transparent as possible and be able to do the things that we need to do to help the kids of this district. And that's the most important thing. Let's keep the focus on the district and the students of this district, and that's what we're doing. Dr. Escobedo, I know that we've done a two-hour presentation or so to the bond oversight committee to get them completely updated, and that's being aired on TV, and it will continue to be aired on Channel 17 so the public can see exactly what's going on. We also did the one yesterday, and that one will be aired. Due to the fact that we had some inclement weather tonight, and that the parents need to know that there'll be a two-hour delay tomorrow in the starting of school because of the inclement weather, all for the safety of the children, every decision we make is taking the children into consideration. So we won't air those ones tonight, but we'll continue airing them tomorrow. And because this is important, and a lot of people do listen to the Board meetings, we're going to give you the Reader's Digest version, as you might say, the short version of the two-hour presentation we did to the, to the bond committee. So with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and do a little presentation, probably not more than 30 minutes or so, so not only for your advantage, but for the general public that hasn't had the opportunity to view. So with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and start.
Cliff note version, you said?
Cliff note version. It's all Cliff. I told my staff, do the Cliff Notes version, guys, shorten it up. We do have a complete booklet, and it is, it's public information. Somebody wants to see the complete booklet, we can make it available to anybody that wants it. So we'll start with Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Superintendent Gonzalez, Board members. Basically, my role was to present a financial update of where we are at. Basically, I looked at various things. I looked at the bond payment that we had to make this year. It's about 9.8 million, 23% of that, or 2 million, basically comes from local resources. Our tax rate is $1.40, and next year, because of the legislature, it's going to drop down to $1.8. So as you can see, we're going to still maintain our eight cents for our INS, which is how we get our money to pay back the bond. From, you've heard a lot about appraisals and you heard about market values. Well, there's a couple of things, maybe comments, that I'd like to make. A appraisal is basically, if you want to borrow money, you have it, somebody appraised the property, and then you do comparables. Well, we went to the taxpayers and they said, "Go ahead, the money's already there. We're not borrowing the money, it's already there." The voter said, "Yes, leverage your funds." And so when we go out and look at property, and the committee that went out and looked at property is myself, our superintendent, Oscar Tapia, and Mr. Pineda, Johnny Pineda, and so we traveled all over the areas that we felt we needed to build schools. And then we decided, okay, this is where we need to school, the demographics show where we need the schools, there's the population, the density, the development, this is where we need our schools. Then we said, okay, well, what is the market value? Well, market value is different than appraisal value. Market value is what a willing buyer, Brownsville I.S.D., is willing to pay for a strategic location for any of our elementaries, middle schools and high schools that we want to build. And so there was a willing seller, and we agreed on a purchase price. For some, it may be, we're paying too much, but if I want to bring relief to a campus, say Vermillion across town, I certainly don't want to look for property over a military highway and try to bring some relief for Vermillion. So our sites have been strategically looked at, and with that in mind, also you understand that as we build schools in these areas, those property values are also going to go up, and when you have property values going up, then of course, we get a greater return on our investment because we will be taxing those increasing values. So we're also trying to keep our standard for 750 for elementary campuses at about 800 to 900 for middle schools and about 2,200 for high schools. We're keeping all in mind, and then of course, trying to eliminate transportation. Transportation is probably the highest single cost this district has. We currently spend a little over $14 million in transportation costs, of which only a little over $2 million is funded by the state. The rest of it, closer to $12 million, we have to take from other areas. They could be, they could go to instruction, but we're having to supplement and to help getting our students to and from schools. And we're probably the only district also that also has transportation for extracurricular activities for all extracurricular activities after school. So also, I wanted to mention, some people make question, well, you know, you need to have a sixty-day notice. Legal policy basically says if you're going to enter into a lease purchase agreement and option to buy, then you need to give a notice. All our purchases have been cash, and so in that sense, we don't need to do the sixty-day notice. Did we do what we felt was proper, yes, administration? This I want to emphasize to the public out there, this was not anyone's recommendation other than the four people that I mentioned, the superintendent, myself, Mr. Pineda, and Mr. Oscar Tapia. We're the ones who went to visit the sites and made that recommendation. I'd be glad to answer any questions on my part, if there are any.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Gonzalez? Yes, I'd like to move on and to the other section, which is the density profiles and surrounding areas of proposed sites for new schools, and Mr. Raul Vasquez and staff have done an excellent job of providing that information as to where we need schools, it's a matter of need, and where the growth is, and we've taken care of. Let me just say a couple of things. We did take care of, people say, "What are you doing for the Southmost area?" We did Ben Bright, and we took that out of local monies. That was money that was used from fund balance. Due to the district being very frugal with her money, we were able to have a very healthy fund balance to be able to build that school strictly from fund balance and without a bond program. And that has alleviated numerous schools in the Southmost area, most in particularly El Jardín and Southmost, which were completely overpopulated. And with that relief, they'll be able to relieve Champion, which is close to 1,000 already, and hopefully we'll be able to shift some of that population to El Jardín to bring that up to 750 or 800 and keep everybody at that particular level. So we have done that already. So we're looking at the other areas of need, and we have a lot of need in the upper areas, and that's where the growth is, so I'll have Mr. Vasquez go ahead and do that presentation.
Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, Board members, as you can see on the map, we've looked at areas that have the most density of property. And in this area, when we're looking at, when we're looking at an area, we calculate 2.5 students per household. And in any area like that, Brownsville has a very young population, so 70% of those students will be elementary students. The other percentages will be middle school and high school students. So in this area right here that the district is looking at, you've got Ituria right here, and you've got Ortiz over here. Ituria and Stillman are bus schools. There'll never be anything else but bus schools. When you look at Ortiz over here, except for the subdivision that's back here, it will be a bus school. But right here, we're looking at a middle elementary and a middle school, and then down at the number one, we're looking at another elementary. So those schools right there, because we will buy some property right here for them to be able to be used as walkers, this will be totally walking schools. Now, the average age of the residency in Brownsville around 25, 27 years old, so it's a very young population. Now, just in A, B, C and D area, which will be developed, you're talking about 1,665 to 1,860 students that are here right now, that will be altogether. And then when you look at middle school students, you're looking at 666 to 775, and you're looking at 607 to 725 high school students that will be found in this area. So if, once we take care of the situation, now, if you were to not, if you were to build these schools anywhere else, you'd also have to take into consideration that you're going to have to bus the students, because right now, this are busing students, this are walking students campuses. Also, if the schools are built by 2008, August 2008, you're talking about a drastic reduction in enrollment for Ituria. Ituria would drop down to 690 students. There are over 1,100 students right now there. The Ortiz would drop down to 663, and the two new schools would start off with no more than 550 students each. I know that the goal of the Board is to have schools, elementary schools at 750. So very conceivably, because of the growth of this area, we would have some schools that would meet below the goal of what the Board wants, and we would still... Now, we're not taking into consideration anything else around there. All these areas here could possibly be developed later on in the future, but it's of right now, the only thing that we have for development is there. So when we look at all those things, we look at the demographics, and the main thing is that we need to start building schools where the students are, not build them farther away and then have to bus the students all the way to other areas. Now, if we go to the, the other situation that we have here, it's across town, we are building another elementary school right here behind Gauzila. This area right here, that land has already been appropriated, we're going to build. That will eliminate some of the overcrowdedness that we have in those schools now. We also own land next to Gallegos, but the situation there is that if you were to build an elementary school there, instead of solving a problem, you're creating a problem, because you're putting two elementary schools together, and you're putting two schools that would be bus, busing schools, because there's no way the students can walk to that school because it's a big canal here. The other situation is that one of those schools would become, nothing but, the Cameron Park students would be a very low, low-income school. Just to give you an idea, just in Cameron Park, we have 1,100 elementary students. That does not take into consideration the middle school and the high school students that exist there. It would be more advantageous to look for some property on the other side of Playa that could make it a walking school, and would eliminate the problem of having to have riding schools next to each other. That property could be used later on for another project, because we already own that property. Now, if we build the two schools plus the other two schools by 2008, and we're just talking about elementary, we would relieve eight elementaries in one, at one time. So this would be the six that are here, which are overcrowded schools, Hudson, Paderes, Gonzalez, Vermillion, Burnt, right away. And then you would relieve the other two on the other side of town. Now, you have to also understand that that's kind of a trickling effect, because any other schools that are within those areas of town would also get relieved. And then if you, when we build the new middle school in the other site, we would relieve, start off with around 800 students per middle school, which would be way below what that goal for the middle school would be. So the only thing that I have to make clear to everybody is that if we build by 2008, all the predictions and all the demographics that we have stand. If we move months beyond that, then a lot of things change, because people start moving in, homes are being built, populations start changing. Are there any questions?
How does that, obviously that makes a difference financially to us, because we're going to invest more money in a busing school. How does that affect the value of the land, of the land itself, independent of the need that we have?
Well, the value of the land, if you have a school built where there's community, of course, the value of the land's going to go up, because you have your school there, but if you don't have any buildings, any homes... But if you don't have any, any buildings, any homes built next to the school, you're just buy, you're just getting revenue on property, not households, homes. So, instead of having a hundred thousand dollar home sit next to it, you're just going to be paying for, you're getting taxes on the property itself.
If I understood you correctly, so the school adds value to the, to the, to the, to the community, to the homes?
Oh, okay, exactly, Mr. Sanchez said, you know, we build a school and you, and the community starts building around the school, that gives the district more tax money because homes are there, instead of just raw land.
And, and you take that into consideration in, in, in scouting for land? I guess my, my question is, uh, what can we do to prevent a price hike because a, a, a land slot is busing or walking? Uh, and like the, the land that's in question, and, and I'm perfectly in order, because it's still reference to land, uh, or we can talk about it more when we actually reach that item. But if, if a, if a certain acre, let's just say one acre for, for, for the sake of, of example, if it's going to be busing or walking, what can we do to prevent over, overpaying for that slot of land? I mean, because we don't, we don't get any of our land appraised when we buy it.
Let, let me, I, I'd like to answer that question. That, that's more in the area that, uh, he works with demographics, those are where we need the schools. And we, we often work with demographics and we try to buy land at, at a convenient time when we need to. We've always bought land ahead of time trying to, to, uh, address the needs as they come around, like we did with Ben Bright, like we've, we've done with other schools, that we purchase land ahead of time. Uh, this area we're, we're, we're talking about, these two schools, those are schools that are needed. That's, that's basically, that's basically it. Those schools are needed. Uh, they're, they're, you know, we, we can say, well, we can go, go build somewhere else. We can go buy land at, at San Pedro, or we can go, uh, buy land somewhere else in the southmost area and bus all these kids clear across town. It'll cost you over four hundred dollars a student per year to, to take those kids across town. Anyway, that's what it takes, about four hundred dollars, uh, per person, per student per year when you get them on the bus to commute every day to and from schools. Uh, it's expensive and it's, it recurs every year. You, you're never going to stop that, as long as, as you do that. And then you say, how are we going to prevent people from, from, uh, saying, my land is worth as much? The thing about it is, we have to, we as a district have to do a better job of having foresight and being able to go and buy land before developments are done. We've done that in the past. We've always been able to do that. Uh, we're very fortunate to do that. In some cases, I guess, uh, Mr. Lehman asked the, the, the last time, said, didn't we own some land in some areas and, and we sold it? Yes, we did. Uh, I'm not putting blame or, 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 or doing anything, but we do value property. We do go around trying to get the best value that we can. But, uh, like Lorenzo says, you, you, you go out there and appraise the property and, and somebody can appraise it and, 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 I'm not saying appraisers are, are, are going to up or down or whatever, they, they can, they can do whatever they want to with appraisers. However, it's, it's like anything else. Uh, if you need it somewhere, you try to work as reasonably as you can and you look at the market and you work with that person to try to get you the best price you can, because you need to build the schools that you, that you, that you need there. Uh, I guess, uh, we could have gone in there and bought twenty years ago, we had enough foresight, maybe we got a better price. Uh, when we look at, at land, we also try to look at infrastructure. What's there? How, what is the best possible way that we can do in order to, to alleviate the cost of the district? You know, infrastructure costs a lot of money. People don't, don't believe that, but it does. Any developer in this community will tell you that infrastructure costs a lot of money. Go in there and, and, and build roads and you put sewer and water lines and you bring everything to the property, that costs you an average of about thirty to thirty-five thousand. I mean, we can, we can honestly say we've done this before. We did it at Hudson Elementary. We have the hard numbers there. Those are not fake numbers. Those are hard numbers. Seven years ago, it cost us twenty, about twenty-four thousand dollars an acre to bring in the infrastructure to that elementary. Uh, you say, well, the, the developer there gave you the land. There was no houses. He, he did not have a development there. Had he had a development there, just like right now, we asked the same developer, can you, uh, do something to alleviate Playa de and, and Hudson? Yeah, he's got land at three dollars a square foot, which is equates to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars an acre. Uh, so when we look at land, we, we try to, to, to value everything that's, that's in there. Now, there's a law also in the state of Texas, and Mike can tell you this, that, that if you don't own the property, you can't, you can't develop. You can't put infrastructure on property we don't own. So, when you look at it and you say, well, yes, is, does it have everything in there? Yes, it does. We also look at the values of land that are, that are surrounding there and where we need them and what's most advantageous to the district, not only in the short term, but in the long term. So, how do we set values on property? A lot of it is based on the seller and a lot of it is based on, on the district willingness to buy at strategic locations. And that's what we come into, we, you know, I use the example I, I told, uh, Mr. Powers yesterday. You know, when we build the aquatic center, very strategic location, extremely strategic location. We needed that aquatic center, we promised we were going to do a state of the art aquatic center, we did it. That was a few years back, back in, uh, I think that was passed in the nineteen ninety-seven bond issue. That land cost us fifty thousand dollars an acre. Some people might have argued at that time that it was too expensive. Look at it now, it was a bargain. Strategic location, once again, where do you need it? And, and, and that's what it is, where do you need it? And, and you can go out there and tell a, a guy, I appraised your land and I appraised it at X amount of dollars. Well, that's, that's great, but this is what it's valued to me. If I got out there and I already developed and I already planted this land and I already built all the infrastructure and I can sell lots at thirty thousand dollars a lot out there, well, he's got his value, he's got his money put in there. So, we try to work with that, Dr. Escobedo, as much as we can, in order to verify the prices and be able to work in the best, uh, what's best for the district. And that's what we try to do as administrators. It work, we have a team of people that work all the time with it. We didn't just go and pick this, the sites or any other sites. We worked at it strategically. When we bought the land that y'all approved at, uh, Salida de Luna, very strategic for Gonzalez and Vermillion. Vermillion's got twelve hundred kids. And, uh, and Gonzalez has pretty close to twelve hundred students. When we open up that school on Salida de Luna, it's going to open up with eight hundred kids. And then there's no more room for growth. We're already at eight, 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 eight. So, when we go out here and we open up these schools, if we don't do something to help out, uh, Stillman, within the next thirty years, Stillman will be at sixteen hundred students. It's a lot of students for a middle school. So, if we look at it strategically, uh, we look at it as what infrastructure, we put it in the contracts when we buy, Dr. Escobedo, have you seen them? That they must have this within a certain timeline? Question was asked by a board member, how long is it going to do before they put the infrastructure in on the, on the land that doesn't already have the infrastructure? It's a hundred and twenty days, it's in the contract. They have to do it. That's part of, of the contract. So, when we look at that and you say, well, take thirty-five thousand dollars an acre away from that, what does it come down to? And then you're looking at, at, at the value of land and then you say, how much is each lot selling for in those general areas? And we can put the value to it. So, we took a lot of things into consideration. How do you hold it down? How do you make somebody sell it to you at the price you want to? That's a good question, I'd love to see that. But, uh, but I tell you what, we work with them as much as we can. When we bought the land on Salida de Luna, the guy wanted a little bit more, I worked with him and worked with him and worked with him until I got him down to what I thought was more a reasonable price. Same thing with all these developers, we work with them. We don't just take their first offer. We work with them until we get them to a, but we consider, okay, that's something we can live with and we're something we can recommend. So, that's how we work it.
I understand everything you've said and I've heard it before, but I just want to make a, a, a point clear, like you said, what is this land valued to me? So, in other words, what I'm trying to ask and I'm putting in question form, do we have caps? I mean, if we, if we, if we, if we need it immensely, it could be worth a lot more than what it really is worth. So, my point is, I want to ask, do we have caps as to what we're willing to pay for land? Uh, I mean, do you have a, a brief to the point answer?
Yes, it is. We do have caps. When we, when, when we feel that it's more, that's, we're being taken advantage of and there is no dollar amount to put to that, but we, we know what we're doing. We've worked with, uh, infrastructure, we look at everything and say, yes, it, it becomes reasonable at this particular time. What is the cap when we think it's unreasonable? And I've told you that before in closed session. A lot of people don't understand, when I take something to, to, to y'all, we discuss it in closed session. We don't discuss it in open, because we're not supposed to. After the fact, we can discuss it all we want to in open session, because it's already been done. These lands are already under contract, so we can talk about it as much as we want to. Before it's done that, it has to be done in closed session. So, if the cap is what we feel is ne- is, is reasonable to us, and that's where the cap is. And, uh, you know, we talked about this land right here and I'm, I'm talking about the one in Playa de. Uh, you know, what's reasonable there is going to be very unreasonable to a lot of people, but those people that own that property there, they're not budging. I've knocked on every door that I can that's got enough land to build a school there. And, uh, they tell me thanks, but when I tell them what I'm hoping or unwilling to, to look at for the district and they say, thank you very much, we're, you know, they're just not willing sellers now, so.
Well, you, you said something that I needed to hear, you said we would not be taken advantage of, which is what I needed to hear, because the fact that we need something, uh, I don't want to feel that we're overpaying for just because simply we need it. So, you, you said what I needed to hear.
We take everything into consideration. We, we will not allow ourselves to be taken advantage of in that area.
That's what I needed to hear. Any other, Mr. Powers?
Yes, thank you, President Escobedo. You know, I, I, I think we did a great honorable thing when we did the, uh, Senate's Bond Committee. And I'm going to respect their opinions and recommendations to this board, because we have told them, help us with the hundred and thirty-five million dollar bond. And it is true, uh, at the facility meeting yesterday, of the board members that were here in, in the presentation, uh, it, it was four people and, and your staff that went out there and, and, and found the land for us. And, and they're knocking, you're right, they're knocking on a lot of doors and, and people know we need land and, and, and it's like a hurricane coming, you know? Everything's going to be sold out, because they know the supply, you know? So, they know we're going to be asking for and then, and they're going to go up a little value. The key's going to be the infrastructure, but I've always, uh, I'll play a little of the devil's advocate. Uh, you know, you always have your critics out there. Now, we have, uh, uh, independent realty, Mr. Ramada says he's has an appraisal that he did on those properties. And I want to know if you'd like him to speak or not, Dr. Escobedo?
If I may answer that.
Yes, I'm just asking.
That, that they, that every, 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 every person in this community has the right to speak during public audience. That's it. By policy, we allow them to do it during public audience. The discussion that needs to be done, decisions made to be made to the board are done in here and with other types of inputs. We have committees, like what we had yesterday, that anybody can come and speak at. Uh, we have our, 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 our policies in place, we do follow, uh, uh, policies in accordance, we do stick to those policies. I've talked to, to Mr. Zolani about that. Those are policies that are in place, we follow rubber rules of order. So, during the public audience, they have, certainly have the right to do and say whatever they need to. During the discussion parts of it, this is not for the general public or else we'd be here to all hours and you'd be breaking your own policy concerning rubber rules of order. But let me tell you about something about, because people have even said, well, can't we just go take it from eminent domain? Eminent domain takes a long time, takes anywhere from a year, approximately a year to get done. Is that about right, uh, counselor, most or many?
That would be extremely optimistic.
And that would be optimistic, but at least a year, maybe more.
Generally, depending, it depends on the resistance that's provided by the landowner. Uh, and, uh, it, it could, it could very easily go to three or four years, uh, before all appeals would be exhausted. But a year would, more realistic would be a year, two, year and a half, depending again on the resistance of the landowner.
And even when we go to eminent domain, it, it, it's, it's, it's not as, as simple as saying, this is what we think it's worth. Uh, let me give you a prime example. This district, since I've been here, has only done one attempt at eminent domain. And boy, we, we were not very successful. Uh, that was the little half acre lot, uh, in front of Ituria Elementary. I know that, that even the, I don't know if, if, if the newspaper's here or not, but those of you that listen, that was a big deal about, that, that we're going to build a, a, a daycare right in front of Ituria in the little half acre lot. Uh, the district went eminent domain on that. You remember that? All, most of you are on the board, I think, other than Mr. Cortez, all of you are on the board. And, uh, we thought that, uh, we could possibly get that half acre for fifty thousand, which everybody thought it was too much. Well, after the court appointed appraiser, did all their work, they brought it all back and the board was asked, okay, you wanted this eminent domain, here's what it's worth, because they took every factor into consideration, including the gentleman saying, I am, this is where I'm going to build a daycare. But when they took everything into consideration, the court said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars was what it's worth for that little half acre. A hundred and ninety-six thousand, correct? Two hu- or close to two hundred thousand for a little half acre. Now, you say, okay, that took us over a year to, to, when we thought fifty thousand was too much, the court came back and said, you want that little half acre, you pay the, the gentleman a hundred and ninety-six thousand. We said, thank you, we'll do a parking lot in the back and we'll do other things that need to be done. But, so, it's easy to say, but it's more difficult to do. And, and they, they take everything into consideration, because how much money is that person going to be making that we're forcibly taking land away from? So, it's better to do it on a, on a willingness to sell and a willingness to buy basis than it is trying to go take it away, because once these lands are planted, once these lands are developed, then the value of property goes sky high. When you look at one lot selling at the, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of the developers are out there, but I think you can get four to five lots out of one acre. Uh, if you take thirty thousand dollars and you go conservative, four lots, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars an acre. That's being conservative. And if you look at, uh, Alton Glory and you look at Frontage, I have some proof on some of those values, uh, selling at sixty-five thousand plus an acre. And if you go look at, at Frontage, that, that forty-two acres has on Al- on Alton Glory, you have plenty of Frontage, gives us complete access, a beautiful school facing Alton Glory. Forty-five thousand dollars an acre doesn't seem so unreasonable, that when you look at all that, and it's got all the infrastructure into it, bringing water, sewer and everything else, right in there to tie into. Uh, some people say, why didn't you go across the street? You have to bore underneath the highway, you have to do a lot of things and then everything becomes busing, it will cost you a lot of money, just like it did in Ituria and, and Stillman. So, we look at everything, Dr. Escobedo. We don't just look at one thing, we look at all the ramifications and what's going on and what's in the business of the district, not in the short term only, but in the long term also. So, that's, that's where, where we're, we're at on this thing. I don't know if you want us to continue with this presentation? We had some, some transportation and we had some, some land values. So, uh, we will continue with that.
Some questions in relation to the, uh, the first two presentations. Uh, first, uh, that Mr. Sanchez, uh, mentioned the, uh, the team that goes out to look at the property. Uh, what is the impact of the team, uh, searching for property, uh, sites? Would this tend to, uh, inflate the prices if, if you have somebody inquiring, uh, represent BISD and, and let you know the person, of course, that they know who you are and you know who they are? Uh, should, should there be a, a third party, uh, type of search in those cases where, uh, if you know that, uh, a corporation is inquiring about, uh, property in, in your neighborhood and they come and knock on your doors, how much would you take for your property? You might think in terms of, um, just inflating the price just to see what your terms are. What would be the, the impact of that, uh, team going out instead of working through a Realtor or, or a real estate attorney just to inquire about the property?
Well, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question. That's something I hadn't thought of, but I, I got an answer for you. Uh, I've been doing this for a long time in this district. If you all well know, I was operations supervisor for many years in this district and, and you've always had me going looking for land. Uh, now I'm the superintendent, so I asked somebody else to go look for land. But, uh, I've tried it in many different ways, I've called anonymously. Uh, I think one time I even had Mike, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike wrote a letter, uh, to a person that was a willing seller, not even mentioning the district, that he was representing somebody else to a certain extent, that he was just trying to get some land. And, uh, without knowing the district, price didn't change. Uh, you know, people know what they're, they're, what they want for their land and I've tried it many different ways. I, I've, I've called anonymously, uh, I've used phones that do not have a BISD number attached to them, so they wouldn't see it on the caller ID, and just inquiring and prices seem to be the same. Uh, this district can hire an independent person to do that, but I think the results will be the same. person to do that, but I think the results will be the same. Uh, you're not gonna get, you might even, I, I think sometimes when they find out it's schools, they might give us a little break. Uh, so, uh, do I think it'll be a real advantage to hire somebody on the, it could be on occasion, but for the most part, we've done it all in-house for many, many years, Mr. Colunga, as you're all aware of. And we've always been trying to do the very best we can for this district. And so we tried different op, ways of, options of doing it, but we still come back. I know Oscar and I have been working on land purchases all the way back to when the nineties, Oscar, when we first started together. And so, uh, we, we know more or less where, what the values of, of land is and, and where we're, we're at it on this one.
In, in relation to the, uh, the difficulty in finding land, is there any way to, uh, require that land be donated for a future development of parts of the city or can we get, uh, funding?
City commissioners, listen in. Uh, I hope you're listening. Mayor, I hope you're listening. I've been an advocate for many, many years that if a developer is going to be developing a piece of property, and you know, because you give them the subdivision plots, that they designate an area for a school and a park because it's very important. When you go out there and you saw the demographics out there, you got sixteen, two thousand students out there in one location, and there's no schools in sight. Uh, we, I think the city working together with the, those school districts has a responsibility of maybe developing some type of city ordinances where they say, "Okay, I'm going to develop X amount of acres, whatever the acreage may be, into home sites that they set aside land for a school." Not necessarily donated it, but setting aside at a reasonable price at the very beginning to give the schools the opportunity to be built there. Uh, that's, that's crucial. So I agree with you, Mr. Colunga, on that, that something needs to be worked out with the city. We cannot do it as a district develop those ordinances, but the city can develop those ordinances to help us out.
One last question, uh, for Mr. Vasquez on, on the, as the overcrowding is relieved, uh, is this a, a short-term or a long-term solution as far as how long would that, um, number be reduced before it begins to, uh, go up again or?
Well, as you can see in the first map that you showed there, there's still some areas that have not been developed. So, for right now, we could say that for three, two or three years after the schools are completed, if, once those new areas are developed, Mr. Colunga, then we're talking about possibly building another elementary somewhere in that section. Because right now, we're only working with the demographics that we have in place. You know? We don't know what's gonna happen to all these areas here. Mr. Gonzalez has already checked into it. And possibility, we could, we could see more development here. And if we do, then we're, we're gonna have to build another school. So we might have to start looking for land for another or two elementary. That section of town is growing tremendously.
I might wanna add to that, that there is no doubt that that area's gonna be developed, it's a matter of when, not of, of if. And we need to start looking for some, some land in that area. But also more in particularly is when we build that, that school, Salida de Luna, which is by Garcia Middle School, that's already gonna be full. So they can't even grow, so if we grow there, we're gonna have to have, build another school. But there is an urgency and...
It'll be right there somewhere.
Yeah, right there in Salida de Luna. There is an urgency to relieve, that's gonna relieve Gonzalez and Vermillion only. There, I don't know if you realize how much, how big Paredes and Hudson are and Burns. They're all over eleven hundred students. Uh, when you build that other school right in there, uh, all you're gonna do is have immediate relief, no growth relief either. It's just a immediate impact. And it, it, you know, all of us that are educators, and I know there's some educators even in the audience that are not, belong to public school, we all know that it's sort of an injustice when you have twelve hundred elementary kids in one campus. Optimum is between five and six hundred. The board has been very gracious to lower from eight to seven fifty. I hope eventually they'll lower it even to seven hundred. If you look at our campuses that are usually recognized and exemplary, those schools, they have between five and six hundred. Uh, once you get into the bigger schools, they say, "Why are they only acceptable?" It's one principal. You know, you have one principal for, for Vermillion, one principal for Gonzalez, one principal for Paredes, one principal for Hudson, one facilitator at each campus. You don't get two. And then you go out there to another school that has seven hundred students or six hundred students, they have one principal and one facilitator. But they're working with twice as many teachers and twice as many students. So what's optimum? Are we, are we here to educate kids or to try to create as many, as many kids as we can into one school? And that's the key. We need to think about students. We need to think about the future of this community. We wanna do the very best we can for our students. But that's what we're looking at, trying to do the very best we can for our students.
Slaman?
Yes, sir. Briefly, I think the issue at hand is justification of the price per acre. And, and I know that Mr. Colunga has placed an agenda item to, I guess, to address or reconsider the agenda or, or the action that we took. Uh, and I think Mr. Colunga asked specific questions, and, and I'll take it up now because otherwise we're gonna revisit it. It's the same issue. But, uh, I guess all questions were answered, Mr. Colunga? Or?
I, I will leave this up for the agenda.
Okay. Would you like to take it on at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
The gentleman's ready to finish the presentation and then we'll address that item when...
Well, for the issue, I guess the issue, the justification, you, as far as the superintendent, feel just on the price?
Yes. I have no power, also I wouldn't have made the recommendation.
Right, okay, right.
Ready to continue to finish off the presentation?
The next section, anything else? Top you. And that's section three of your book, if you have your book with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, members of the school board. Basically, we're gonna talk about some research that we did on the prices of the properties that we looked at, the team that Mr. Sanchez mentioned, of him, Mr. Pineda, and I looking out for properties. And also includes a couple of properties that Mr. Gonzalez and I had looked at back in the summer, uh, when we had another, a separate, a different superintendent, we had already done some research on, on some of these areas. Um, the two properties, we had already researched the areas and bought properties where the property we talked about on Salida de Luna, that's behind Garcia Middle School in Minnesota, then back Salida de Luna back there. And we had looked at a couple of properties there. And, uh, the best deal we could find was a fifteen-acre tract that was found for sixty-three cents a square foot, twenty-seven thousand an acre, a little bit over that. Uh, but this property has no infrastructure. The water and sewer are on eight oh two, we need to bring it to the site. And we'll have to widen the street in front of the, in front of the school. It's a very narrow road and the city requires that we do that. So when you add the, that cost back in, it'll double the price of the property to about a dollar twenty, dollar twenty-five a square foot by the time we're done, uh, having that property ready to develop. There was another property in the area, a little bit cheaper at fifty cents, fifty-seven cents a square foot at twenty-five thousand an acre. But it was off of another side road, of this side road and next to an undesirable location. And we felt it was better staying on the, the main side road. So this is a property we recommended. Uh, and then, of course, we had already bought the eighty acres for the high school on Military Highway in front of River Bend Resorts. That one came in at twenty-nine cents a square foot, twelve thousand six hundred an acre for one million dollars. Uh, when we went back with Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Pineda, I took them to these areas we had already looked at. And we had, uh, also had an offer there on Salida de Luna on near Culture Road. It's a private street there, it's just on south of the property that we bought. And they wanted two dollars and fifty cents a square foot for a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred an acre, fourteen acres for one and a half million. Uh, but there was no infrastructure, but the developer wanted to commit as part of the deal to run water sewer and streets from eight oh two up north to the site. And he was including all that, all, all that infrastructure as part of the, part of the price at two fifty a square foot, um, compared to the one we had bought just across the street on Salida de Luna. We felt that was very expensive and we did not consider that property. Uh, moving further west, uh, we, uh, we have gotten some quotes at the Brownsville Country Club area. There's a couple of tracks we looked at there, one in particular, two dollars seventy-five cents a square foot. That's a hundred and twenty thousand an acre. And that's got all infrastructure. Uh, Paredes Line Road, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, uh, and Heritage Trail, just the other side of the Brownsville Event Center. There was ten acres there by the developer, the Pacel de Rosaca, and they wanted three dollars a square foot for all improve, with all improvements on the, on the site. Uh, going along Alton Glor, we were trying to find property to relieve Burns and a little bit west of Iturri and some Paredes, the Cameron Park area. So we're looking at, at that area. And Alton Glor and Paredes was six dollars and eleven cents a square foot, two hundred and sixty-six thousand an acre for eight and a half million for a thirty-two acre tract that, uh, just south of the Glor lumberyard there. We're trying to be, buy a piece of that property. They, they didn't wanna split it up or much less lower the price. And that was the going rate. We went a little bit further west to Alton Glor and Pablo Quiselle. And that property, there's a fourteen acre tract there for six dollars and fifty cents a square foot, uh, two hundred and eighty-three thousand acre for a little over four million dollars. And that, of course, was very, way beyond our, our, a reasonable price for the district. South of Glor on Pablo Quiselle, there's a lot of vacant land just south of that subdivision. There's some land there, maybe we can buy some land there. Uh, we inquired with, uh, Mr. Manuel Perlman that has all the listing of that property, most of that area. Several of those tracks went anywhere from seven to nine dollars a square foot with all utilities and street improvements. Going in fur, further west on, uh, Alton Glor turns into Florida de Mayo west of the expressway and hitting Military Highway way west, west of town, heading towards the river. There's a twenty-seven acre tract there that they want three and a half million for, a hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred an acre for two dollars and ninety-one cents a square foot. So that, we're back to the three, almost three dollars a square foot property that we had on Paredes Line Road. And, uh, the only other property that, that, uh, we saw that really would be ideal for the schools were south of Al, Alton Glor or Florida de Mayo, where all that development was happening. And that's where all the kids are, those are the demographics that Mr. Vasquez presented. But, uh, we didn't see any land really for sale. So we, we approached the developer, uh, Mr. Simmons of Elvaya, because we had approached that, that area about five years ago in trying to buy property there, although the subdivisions really hadn't taken off. And we presented that to the administration at that time. I'm not sure if it got to the board, but we were told, "No, that's, uh, area is useless back there. There's nothing back there. And we're gonna have to run all the, first, infrastructure and streets. And then developers are gonna piggyback on our infrastructure. So it's really not worth even looking at." Uh, so, as Mr. Gonzalez said, foresight. If we would've looked at that a little harder and worked with the developer a little, a little better, we would've had those properties five years ago. Five years later, look at the prices that, that we're looking at now. So Mr. Simmons just said, he, he was willing to work with us. He was, wanted to sell those properties with us back five years ago to help his development, his neighborhoods, his, his clients. He wanted schools in those areas, but we, we really weren't, uh, working, uh, too hard to buy properties from him at that time. So he says, "Yeah, let's, let's talk and we've got some ideas." And make a long story short, these are the two properties that we came up with, that, uh, he was already plating. The Heritage Place, sixteen acre tract, were two hundred lots. Uh, he's got his infrastructure built in, engineering costs, plating fees, and, uh, potential profits for all his lots. He was willing to put that on hold and sell us that property at a reduced price from what he was envisioning, all his future profits, profits and investments, uh, to help that, that whole development. And we also had a, a forty-three acre tract that fronts on Alton Glor and Schaefer, that little private road next to Ortiz Elementary, which he already had, a couple of buyers wanted to buy that from him and he was gonna sell it. And we asked him if he could please reconsider. We really wanted, uh, those properties for not only one school, but that, that's gonna house two schools, the forty-three acre tract. That one came out to a dollar three a square foot with all infrastructure. So we, we're excited about that price as well, once we started finding out what the prices were going for in that area. So those are the two properties, uh, that we recommended. The sixteen acre tract came out to a dollar forty-seven a square foot after we negotiated it down from its original starting price. It does come out to almost sixty-four thousand an acre. But for sixteen point seven acres, just over a million dollars, um, we felt that it was, it was a good deal, a good price. And again, there's still some comments being made in, in public that this is raw undeveloped land that we're buying and that's grossly misstated. This, these, this purchase of this property has total facilities, streets on both sides, water sewer, and, uh, electrical underground services and telephone service. So this is, uh, after we looked at all this information, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Sanchez and I and Mr. Pineda, we all went over it many times. And make a long story short, we finally said, "This is the best deal we can recommend to the board at this time. And it's gonna save us a fortune in busing. We build them on the south side of Alton Glor, uh, or Florida de Mayo." So that's how we came up with, with that recommendation. I'll open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the board? John Salas?
No, I, I just wanna say a, a few words. A lot of people sometimes that are listening, we, when we, when we talk three dollars a, a square foot, six dollars a square foot, just for the public, a lot of times a lot of public doesn't understand, "Well, what does that equate to per acre?" Well, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and six, sixty square feet in an acre. So when you say three dollars a square foot, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars an acre. When you say six dollars a square foot, you double that. You're talking about over quarter million dollars an acre, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. So when, when you start looking and say, "Well, forty-five thousand dollars an acre," that's a dollar, a little over a dollar, dollar and three cents a square foot. And unfortunately, Brownsville is no longer a town. It's considered a city. And I, I don't know if people understand that, that it's a fast-growing city. Uh, BISD is not only the seventeenth largest district in the state, it is the ninety-seventh largest district in the nation. That, that's something that a lot of people need to sort of take in. And, and so, people, land is no longer being sold, uh, in developing areas by, by acres. They're, they're talking square feet. And so, how many square feet do you want? And, uh, and that's when you get to be a city, I guess, is when you start talking about, uh, selling property by the square foot rather than by acreage. So I just wanted to make that very clear to people. And then we're talking about six dollars, when, so top is saying, they wanted six dollars a square foot, well, how much did they want per acre? They want about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. So that's what, what needs to be transpired because I know that the paper sometimes is, is saying they're forty-five thousand dollars an acre. Well, how much is it per square foot? It's a dollar a square foot. It's slightly more than a dollar a square foot. So when you look at six dollars a, a square foot, you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. So this is what we looked at, and this is, this is public information. Anybody that wants to can have this. Um, if we're not, we're ready to go to the other section, which is transportation costs, which we always take into consideration because transportation is perpetually nature. Uh, I always say that if, if, if you, if you built the school, I told, I told the committee, I, I'll repeat it, I haven't, I, I'm not embarrassed to say, when we built, when we make mistakes, we try not to duplicate mistakes. Uh, and I'm not saying that Iturri and Stillman were mistakes, but they're, they're a hundred percent busing. And that creates traffic jams, that creates a lot of cost for transportation. And when we look at transportation, you pay that every year. It's not gonna go away. It just doesn't go away. You're gonna have to put kids in, in buses and take them to a location. And those schools together will probably be at least between fifteen hundred and two thousand students forever. And you're gonna have to bus those students in and out of there every day. So you're gonna have to have those buses there running every day. So, Mr. Chirinos will tell you about cost of transportation and what other things we take into consideration when we look at school sites.
Good evening. Mr. Gonzalez, I'm gonna take the liberty of passing these hands, handouts for the people that were not here yesterday, for the board members that aren't here.
You might wanna get true, you wanna bring those up around here?
Two statements that I like to say to everyone that can listen to me. Yes, we are expensive. And if we don't get into the frame of mind of building neighborhood schools in the next few years, the transportation costs will, will skyrocket. I'm gonna, uh, those handouts, I'm gonna go over them in a few minutes with you. But this study was based on, uh, an enrollment of schools of the same size, seven hundred to eight hundred students per school. And the startup cost for twenty-six buses, ten regular buses at an average of eighty thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars. Three in the average, uh, of, uh, three special need buses on the average of eighty-five thousand dollars is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That is based on one school. Keeping in mind that we're talking about two schools here, it's, the startup cost is two million dollars only on vehicles, on buses alone. When I presented this on Thursday to the committee, uh, they wanted to see some car, some hard numbers as far as the cost of the district. And this is what this handout is, is, is about. On personnel cost, you have a, uh, a cost, we will need twenty-six drivers, those twenty-six buses, of two thousand one hundred. This includes all the benefits per month of a driver. Times twenty-six, it gives you a total of fifty-four thousand dollars. Times nine months of employment, you can see it there, and you can see the numbers there, it's four thousand, uh, four hundred thousand dollars and plus, okay? I'm just giving you the, the round figures. On the monitors, if you have special ed monitors, I mean buses, you must need, you must have a monitor on that bus. So you're talking about two thousand dollars per monitor per month with all the benefits. Six monitors, times six monitors is twelve thousand dollars per month for six monitors. Times nine months of employment, you have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars per, and plus, you can see the numbers there. You put them both together and you give a grand total of six hundred thousand dollars, drivers and monitors. You have to remember, this is a fixed cost for the district, continuous, doesn't stop. On the fuel cost, on the next page that you have there, an average route on a daily basis is seventy miles. Buses only give us, gives us, uh, from eight miles to a gallon, eight to ten miles to a gallon. At this point, we're paying a dollar and seventy-nine cents per gallon. Time nine gallons to run seventy miles, and you see the cost there, sixteen dollars per, uh, per bus, per day. You multiply that by twenty-six buses, you got, you had a grand total of four hundred dollars and nineteen cents. That's for two schools. Four hundred and nineteen dollars, and I'm just giving you the numbers, you can see them there, times five days a week transporting students, it's two thousand nine, ninety-five dollars per week. You multiply that by thirty-six instructional weeks, you have a grand total on fuel alone, seventy-five thousand dollars plus. That is another cost, uh... That is another cost. Okay. On the third page that you have there, you see that you have a yearly cost, fuel cost, seventy-five thousand dollars, that's three hundred, and then personnel cost, six hundred thousand dollars, total cost of six hundred, seventy-nine thousand dollars and seven hundred. If you multiply that by three, you go into the three million. If you multiply that by ten years, you go into the six million. So, the cost is expensive, if we don't start thinking of building neighborhood schools where the students can walk to school. The last page that I have here, I don't know if you have your book or not, every year, we submit two TA reports, one in December and one in July, to the Texas Education Agency. I have compared the last five years. In two thousand one, we had two hundred and sixty-three buses. In two thousand six, we had two hundred and ninety-four buses, a difference of thirty-one buses. Enrollment daily ridership of students per day. In two thousand one, we had sixteen thousand students riding the buses. I anticipate that this July first, when I submit the TA report, I anticipate a report of thirty-one thousand students ridership to increase. The difference is fourteen thousand students. We do not have enough buses right now for the elementary students. That's why you hear that we have double runs in all the elementaries. What is a double run? I'd like to explain that. We go pick up the first sixty, seventy students, take 'em home, the same bus comes back and takes the rest of the students home. That is a daily event at our district right now, I want you to know that. And the other area that I wanna mention to you, this does not include the tires, the oils, the, all the others, repairs, parts and everything, that is just numbers on personnel and fuel cost. If we provide a hazardous route to a school, hazardous meaning that the students cannot cross a railroad, cannot cross an expressway, a major four-lane highway, we have to transport those students across the street or the railroad to the school. When we submit the report to TA, they provide us, or they reimburse us only ten cents to the dollar, ten cents to the dollar. That becomes very expensive to us. Again, I would like to tell you that, yes, we are expensive. I'd like to close with a statement saying that we need to get into the frame of mind of building neighborhood schools where the students can walk to school. Any questions?
Questions, comments from the board? John Salis?
Thanks, Chirinos. And we'd like to finalize our presentation, but just showing you what our police department goes through on a daily basis out there in Alton Glor. And Chief, Chief In, there he is. He's gonna just show you a few, a picture says a thousand words, as they say, and we just wanna show you what, if you've never been in Alton Glor or whatever, by Ituri in the mornings, I know some of you avoid it, but you can go out there, the lines are there, and we'd like to see, just to see you, for the general public to see what kind of traffic we have out there, and continuing to grow.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Dr. Scovado, Superintendent, members of the Board, Cabinet. I'd like to demonstrate here, this process here is very simple, I'm gonna go really fast with these photographs, 'cause I believe you have a handout that shows the area that we're going to talk about. And I'm gonna go to Ituri, I believe that's the area that we want to look at really quick here. Correct, yeah, but I'm gonna move it forward, 'cause that's where you wanna...
Yeah, go ahead and go to Ituri.
Ituri, okay.
Yeah, that's, what he's showing you is going by is that narrow street, that's on Dana Road, where Gallegos is, that's, that's a lot of traffic in there on that real narrow road, and we put a school on that road again, we'd really be in big, serious trouble there. That's Gallegos area.
Right.
That's by Cameron Park. See, a bus has difficulty just turning into those streets there.
Okay. This is Ituri Elementary, Stillman Middle School, daily, this is Monday through Friday, officers assigned to this intersection, that's the entrance to Ituri. An officer is brought in a couple of hours before shift to do that special assignment for this traffic situation that we have. Obviously, this is a traffic, a safety concern that we have.
This is BISD Police, right? This is not City?
That's correct.
This is us.
This picture here is northeast Alton Glor. By the way, this traffic is, like I said, Monday through Friday, between thirty-five and forty minutes daily, Monday through Friday. This is traffic that's trying to exit the dropout exit onto Alton Glor. Again, this is eastbound traffic on Ituri, right in front of Ituri. This particular photo shows Ituri traffic, eastbound traffic. This photograph shows a westbound traffic on, in front of Ituri Elementary. This photograph here is showing several buses that are trying to exit onto Alton Glor from Stillman and Ituri. There's another bus behind that third bus, if you see that last bus in this photograph, there's more traffic that's coming onto Alton Glor. Again, this is traffic exiting the Stillman and Ituri onto Alton Glor. This particular photograph, this is the parent that's trying to exit the driveway of that particular house, this individual lives right in front of Ituri. Again, the heavy traffic during this time. This particular photo shows westbound traffic, Alton Glor, not only do we have issues and problems with vehicle traffic, but this particular photograph demonstrates that we do have large, heavy-duty traffic, semi-trucks with heavy-duty materials that we have to monitor on a daily basis, and it becomes a safety issue. Again, this is traffic, eastbound, traffic onto Alton Glor, in front of Ituri. And this particular photograph shows traffic again, and eastbound traffic in front of Ituri. And that ends the...
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Gonzalez?
That basically concludes our presentation on this particular issue. Like I say, the bond program is moving forward, we are moving forward, we are anticipating on, are starting, and one thing I wanna say, I wanted to talk more than about this piece of land, I think we need to really get on with the bond program. I think sometimes we spin our wheels on areas that we don't need to spin our wheels on, but we need to get on with the selection of architects. And like I told you all yesterday on the Facilities Committee meeting, I need, we need to move on that, because without architects, you can't design schools. It's required by law to have registered architects to do that. We're shortlisted already, administration's working on the shortlist, we'll be presenting it, and the Facilities Committee, along with the Bond Oversight Committee, will be entertaining presentation from those architectural firms here in the near future. I'll be working with Mr. Lehman, he's the chairperson for the Facilities Committee, is trying to get him as early as next week to do the presentations for high school. So, Mr. Tapia and I will be working along with Mr. Sanchez and getting those architects in and being able to do the presentation. So, as soon as we can, we're gonna start doing that. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are proceeding with selection of architects. We do have a timeline, I don't know if Mr. Sanchez brought this, but bond money does have a timeline, we don't have forever to spend it. Since May, we were put on a three-year timeline, we said we couldn't finish schools in three years, so we asked the state to extend it to four years, and they did. So, that gives us about three and a half years left to do the schools, design them and build them and finish them, if not just designing them and start construction, that's completion. So, we are on a timeline, and we need to move forward. I think we're not gonna get a better deal than twenty-five cents on the dollar for this money, and we need to take advantage of it, and of course, construction costs does go up as we delay, but we're moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item eight, presentation of two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget calendar, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. Like I promised you all, we're gonna start working on this budget real early, and Mr. Sanchez has provided you with the calendar for your information, to be able to do that. If you have any questions, Mr. Sanchez will be glad to answer them for you, but the budget process does start in January.
Questions, comments from the board? Not, moving on to B, standing board agenda items, ten board calendars, Mr. Gonzalez?
Number nine.
Oh, number nine, I'm sorry. Percentage of students that are currently dropped out of school, programs in place, and success rate of these programs, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. This agenda item was placed by Mr. Cortez, and I talked to Mr. Cortez briefly on it, and this agenda item will be talked, let me just say, we're gonna do a real brief thing with Ms. Pena on this. This really is, we take this up in Curriculum Committee meeting, which is twenty-third, and we're really getting to focus with this, but I'm glad that Mr. Cortez put it in, because we are aware that we do have an issue with student graduation rates and so on and so forth. So, of course, Ms. Pena, there she is, are you ready to go, Ms. Pena, with a brief presentation on this? And I just might add, Mr. Cortez, we will do this more in depth on the Curriculum Committee meeting set up for the twenty-third of this month, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I decided that I would present from here, because the whole curriculum department came to my rescue and provided me with a lot of the data that has been asked and requested of the curriculum department. Board members, I have provided each and every one of you with a packet, and I hope all of you have it. And the first thing that I'd like to start off with is the definition of a dropout. The state of Texas defines a dropout as a student who has enrolled in Texas Public Schools in grade seven through twelve, does not return to the Texas Public School the following fall, is not expelled, and does not graduate, receives a GED, continues in high school outside of the Texas Public School system, or began college, or die. One big distinction that I would like to make is that the Texas Education Agency identifies or defines a dropout as such. The federal government, under the No Child Left Behind, defines a dropout as a completion rate, or holds a standard to all our high schools in the nation through a school completion rate. In other words, AYP under the No Child Left Behind, if you're a ninth grader, they count four years later, and that marks you, or the school, as not having the completion rates necessary for their standard. Texas Education Agency on page, on the second page of Tab One, identifies all the lever codes, that's our data entry people at our schools, every code identifies where a student goes, or what has become of the student when they withdraw. All of those codes identified, graduated, died, returned to home country. By the way, returned to home country, last year, four hundred and eighty of our students were not counted as dropouts, because they returned, most of them, to their home country, which is Mexico. Homeschooling, removed by Child Protective Services, expelled, enrolled in Texas private schools, and in another school in Texas, administrative withdrawal, graduated from Texas, returned, left again, received a GED. There's a real tricky stipulation here. You have to get your GED before August thirty-first of the following year, or else September first, if you receive your GED on September first, you're marked as a dropout. All of those codes, oh four, oh five, this is the latest and current dropout data, now keep in mind that we don't go last year, last year's graduates, the year before that, it's one percent dropout rate, while the Region One has maintained a one point two, and the state has point ninety percent. I've given you sub-populations, so that you may see how we fare with our males and our genders and special programs, like special ed, economically disadvantaged are left in that at risk. This time, Terry, do you think you can swing all the way to the very end, because I think that's very pertinent at this time? We're gonna go at the very end. We have a dropout comparison to other similar-sized districts, El Paso, Real Grande City, Harlingen, McAllen, Dallas, Brownsville, and San Antonio. El Paso has a one point two for the oh four, oh five, Real Grande City, one point three, Harlingen, one point four, McAllen, one point five, Dallas ISD, one point five, Brownsville, one point five, and the San Antonio ISD, one point seven. We'll continue with Tab Three. Some of the requests, one of the requests was, provide us with some of the programs that, or initiative that the district has to deter dropouts. I have provided you with a list of all the programs that address elementary, middle school, and high school. Some of these initiatives address across the board and are very comprehensive. We also gave you a list of personnel that is also considered an initiative, because this is in above added value to help directly with our at-risk populations, and other activities that we use at the campuses to try to help our at-risk students. I'd like to showcase at least three. There's a team project. The team project is an initiative that is a collaborative program that works with the community's daycares. We work, go out into the community and work with Niño's Head Starts programs, private daycares. This research-based framework is to improve the integration and coordination of services provided to the young children by a very early age. Childhood educators and childcare providers provide the same curriculum for all of our students. Early intervention strategy is a quality early childhood development made available to all our students. Successful experiences in early childhood programs will encourage children to stay in school and produce self-sufficient individuals, and maybe graduate and go on to college and reach lofty goals. Can I say I was a former kindergarten teacher when I started my educational career? The minute they walked through the door, we can tell as educators that child already comes to us with a disadvantage, and they are marked as at risk. The PAL Newcomer Project, that addresses our middle and high school. The PAL Newcomer Project is designed to address the needs of selected group of newly arrived students entering BISD secondary schools. They provide a dual, they face a dual language, these students. They lack English proficiency, and they lack the literacy and academic skills of their home language. So, we provide them in these centers, they're located at Cummings Middle Schools, we have two currently, and one at Hannah. The newcomers' programs' goals are to develop literacy and academic skills and social skills, to impact the high failure rates and dropout rates. When they come to our schools, they have to become assimilated, and they can barely have the academic skills to survive, to be successful. They develop a more positive image, and they become students that are given the right reading skills and academic skills that can help them boost their education. The last one I'd like to showcase is our Brownsville Learning Academy. That one, that is an alternative school of choice educational program that offers academic options for students who just do not fit in the regiments of a regular high school setting. These students have the competency to graduate, but for some reason just cannot flourish in our regular classrooms in the high schools. So, up to date, the good news is that the academy has graduated, or will graduate, ninety students, the total of ninety students, who would otherwise be counted as dropouts. Believe we have a graduation later this week that would make it to ninety. That's ninety students who will get to walk across the stage and receive a diploma, or otherwise they'd be a dropout. We have many, many initiatives that I would like to explain, that can be requested, and we could give you more information on. On Tab Four, we've given you the supplemental program description, so that you may see, you know, which program you may want more information on. On Tab Five, we also were asked to give the results of any program evaluation that we may have for our initiatives. On Tab Five, you will see that the ARE department has worked very diligently in trying to comply with many, many requests to have program evaluations. May I say that they are not prepared at this time to give us formal evaluations of each program, but they do go out and fact-finding and give us many, a lot of data for each of the programs, and they sit with the program administrator to make decisions on how to be more effective and efficient with our programs to meet the needs of our students. The Stray Horn Report was given to us and recommended that we have... The Stray Horn Report was given to us and recommended that we have an evaluation department. The Weber Curriculum Audit Report also requested that we have, uh, an evaluation for programs. Currently, we're working on a plan to bring to you at a later date, but we are looking at the idea of dividing the ARE department into a testing center as well as an evaluation center. Uh, I, we're, we have some vacancies that have not been, been filled and we're working on trying to get the personnel in so that we can go full force. But what you have in front of you after tab five is a schedule that ARE department uses on an annual basis to go and visit, uh, these programs so that they may give us some data to see how we're progressing or are not progressing. Working towards accomplishing the program evaluation. They, um, also meet the needs of, of many testing requirements, our tax alone and the testing that the state requires of us. So, there are many, many tasks for this department. In summary, I'd like to say that the dropout committee has been formulated for BISD. Not since the spring of two thousand and three has there been a dropout committee. And that dropout committee's recommendations, there were seven major, bold statements that were requested from a large committee of community members and, and leaders in our community as well as employees. We have nearly complied with all seven of the recommendations that that dropout committee and recovery committee had provided for us. We're currently working under the leadership of Mr. Gonzalez, area superintendent's headed by, uh, Mrs. Rachel Layala. A dropout committee that will come to you very shortly with some recommendations to further help our dropout. By, by no means, what I've given you tonight, is this the panacea or the answer for all our dropouts. We don't want Band-Aid results or, or remedies. What we're trying to do is have a systemic change in our district so that we can meet the needs of all of our students because every student deserves to graduate and that is our number-one goal. Dropouts are, are of high concern for all of us. We are continuing the quest for a systemic change and strategies and programs that are meaningful and that, that really meet the needs of our students. You have any questions on?
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Cortez? Would you speak into the mic?
You said these evaluations, you, you didn't have any numbers on these evaluations. How often are these evaluations? How often do they take place?
On a yearly basis, Mr. Cortez, uh, we have, we have annual evaluations of all programs. And, and when I say evaluations, the, and I have, I have evaluation department here. Really, what they go out and they get all the facts of how many students pass tax and really that's, that's a big evaluation. Are the students successful with student assessment, the assessments that are required by the state? I have, uh, Mr. Vasquez here and Ben Estrada and, and they conduct a lot of the program evaluations that we call the program evaluation because that's all we have. They bring the data, they sit down with the administration, they sit down with area superintendents, and we disaggregate the data so that we can make pertinent decisions. They're done on a yearly basis. Now, they did provide a calendar here. Some of it, some of the evaluations are every two years, some are every three years for certain programs.
Okay, and so, right now, the district doesn't have any, and the only reason I brought this particular item up at this time, and I guess this question's more towards our superintendent, was, I wasn't part of the selection process when you got hired and, and I know that now, this new leadership, you're, you're in charge of this, uh, running BISD. And, uh, my question was, when I brought this, before this board, was to really get a, to get a feel for what plan you and your administration have, uh, for helping reduce or, or bring down this, this obviously large problem that we have, not only at BISD but statewide, obviously. To get more feedback so that me personally, and I'm sure I would speak for everybody else on this specific issue, that we stand behind you on whatever you need in order to get, uh, these numbers reduced. And so, really, it was, uh, more of an informative thing for me to find out uh, what your administration has planned in the upcoming school year. Obviously, you came in, you know, halfway, halfway through.
And, if I may.
Gonzalez?
Uh, to address this issue, you, you're absolutely right, uh, Mr. Cortez. And our curriculum department has continuously been working to, to address the issues. Uh, we started addressing these issues when, when I took Oregon as an interim and said, "Look, guys, we have some, some real issues concerning graduation rates and we want to be able to address the issues." The focus is not, you know, we have other issues which are buildings and everything, but that's not the, the issue, the, the focus of this administration. The focus of this administration is instruction, curriculum and instruction. That's our focus. We like to spend time there. We don't, we, we want to spend time there. Uh, to me, there's nothing more than, than, than providing an adequate education, more than adequate education, the very best we can for students of this district. We never want to see a student not graduate. Our goal is to graduate a hundred percent of the students, but not only that, that's minimum. We also expect that, that be able to, to prepare students for life, to be able to continue their education, to be able to go on to college if they so desire, to enter the business world, the world of work. Or if they, if they decide to do that and change their mind three years afterwards, after they graduate and say, "You know what, I, I want to continue my education." That they have that basic foundation to opportunity have choices in life. We, as a district, have that duty and that responsibility, educate every student that comes through our doors, regardless of what they bring with them, uh, regardless of their nationality, regardless of what we might perceive to be their handicapping condition. I talked to the principals and said, "Let's knock down the barriers." We create, sometimes we create our own barriers. Let's knock down those barriers and let's continue to work with these students. Let's not find excuses as to why we couldn't get them there. Let's work to find solutions to get them there. And that's the goal of this administration. We will reduce the dropout rate. What I would like to say is we will increase the graduation rate. We are, we're focused on that. We're gonna move forward on that. I know that this board, that's what they want. I, there's no doubt about it in my mind that this board, it, it has done that, has expressed that to me. And we, that's my main focus. There's no other focus more important than that. I know we have other things that we need to do. We have to do budgets, we have to do buildings, we have to do bond projects, we have to do everything maintenance. We have to do a lot of things out there, but let's not lose our main focus, which is curriculum and instruction. And as we, we go forward, we want to educate every student that walks through our doors and ensure that they have an opportunity for success. They have an opportunity to have choices in life, that we don't limit them to what they can do, but rather let them experience and be able to achieve whatever they want to achieve. All of us sitting in, in the front of this room and sitting in, in, in around cabinet have been very successful. Why? Because somebody gave them that opportunity. That's our jobs. That's our main focus, to give them that opportunity for success. So, asking, what is our focus? We're gonna do program evaluations. We're gonna see what's working, continue with that. That that has not been working, put it aside. And let's, let's do some programs that can help our students. So, when we have cabinet meetings, we work on that. Every Tuesday morning, nine-thirty, some people call and say, "Who is Mr. Gonzalez? He's in a meeting." Well, I'm meeting with my staff to make sure that we're taking the right steps to ensure that student success. We will be coming to this board with new initiatives, guarantee you that, uh, in order to, to increase graduation rates and alleviate the problems that we have. Uh, there's going to be some, some drastic steps that are gonna be taken. Uh, we developed board goals and objectives. Tomorrow, as a matter of fact, principals all know this, I said, no substitutes. All program administrators and principals are required to be in this room at one-thirty. I don't want your substitute. I don't want an assistant principal. I don't want a helper. I want the key people in this room because we're gonna go over goals and objectives. One of those goals and objectives is curriculum and instruction, and we're gonna take that focus and move forward with it. So, Mr. Cortez, there's a lot of work to be done. Appreciate you bringing this item up. We're gonna continue to work hard and smart to be able to educate, provide best possible education for the students and to be, ensure their success. That's what we're gonna be doing.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Pena. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item, uh, to B, standing board agenda items, ten board calendars, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, uh, some exciting things that are happening in our district and, and I want to be able to articulate that to all of you. I already told you that tomorrow, I'm having a principal's meeting and a program administration hall combined to focus on, on board goals and objectives. Eighteenth, which is Thursday, don't forget, BLA graduation. That's very important. If you can make it, it's going to be at, uh, at the cap over there at, at Central, at the auditorium, and it starts at seven PM. I'm also gonna have on the eighteenth, a superintendent's community coffee for the Porter Cluster at Porter High School Auditorium at nine AM. Those of you that can make it, appreciate if you could. Uh, we have a science fair on, on this, uh, Saturday, uh, BISD Middle School Science Fair at Stillman Middle School. I invite you all to be there. Starts at eight AM. The board workshop that was scheduled for the twentieth had been moved to the twenty-seventh. And I, I didn't get any notice on the twenty-seventh, so we're continuing with the twenty-seventh. Uh, very important curriculum committee meeting on the twenty-third, five-thirty PM, right here in the boardroom. Uh, BISD College and Financial Eight Night at the Brownsville Event Center on the twenty-fifth. We also have a, regarding the dropout committee, Ms. Layala will be having a dropout committee meeting with her group that afternoon also at five o'clock. Is that right, Ms. Layala? Five-thirty. Uh, we also have a, a, a orientation for bilingual NESL new teachers in the boardroom on the twenty-seventh. Very important date is, uh, and it's not Groundhog Day that's important, the important day about on, on February second is principal for a day. That's when community members take the role of principals in our schools and they shadow our principals to see what it is that our principals do on a daily basis. Uh, that's, that's gonna be a nice one. We're always very successful with that. We have a district, uh, history fair on, uh, Saturday, the third, at Lopez High School. And, uh, we also have a, on the tenth, something that you need to put on your calendar, it's also exciting for me, is the BISD Spelling Bee at Perkins Middle. So, and with that in mind, uh, on the sixth, when we have the next regular board meeting, I'll bring you up to date on Charo Days, which is coming around. And the last of, uh, we haven't canceled it, Charo Days is still there, and that's during the week of, uh, the eighteenth through the twenty-third. And, uh, we have the children's parade, the Charo Days festivities and all of that through that time. Don't forget Fiesta de Ricardica on the nineteenth. Just a little pre-apple as to what we're gonna be discussing the next time. Okay? Any questions?
Questions, comments on our calendar, Mr. Cortez?
That committee meeting was moved from this upcoming Saturday to the twenty-seventh. Okay?
That's right. That's board workshop.
If no more questions, then we move on to item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is a public comment period. This is time for citizens, staffers, students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meetings, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments, comments heard tonight, your name and subject matter of your comments must appear in the signing sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his comments. With all due courtesy, we strictly enforce a time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the use of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint, against an employer or officer, I will interrupt you and ask, uh, and direct you to proceed with BISD formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF Local. With all cautiousness in mind, we will now be glad to hear your general comments. Uh, remember you have five minutes to present your comments.
Dr. Scuero.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if you look at the list, we have seven, uh, individuals that have signed up. That would, if, it's at your discretion.
We're gonna give him the five, for four, five minutes.
You wanted to give him the five? Okay, that's fine.
The first person is Pat Amadland. Yes, sir, uh, Mr. One, uh, uh, Mike, you'll help me with the time.
Uh, Mr. President and, uh, board members, thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Appreciate. I'm here as a concerned citizen and also hopefully to guide you as an expert in real estate appraising. I'm not asking you to take my word for it, I'm asking you to consider it, and if you disagree, disprove it. Uh, because contrary to what the superintendent said, I have a sort of, I'm certified by the state of Texas. And if I misrepresent the, the, the market and if I inflate value or some, do something improperly legal, I can lose my certification. So, appraisers can't just come up with a number and tell you this is what it's worth. It's gotta be based on market facts. And the appraisals I submitted, now hopefully you got, were based on market facts. I appraised a sixteen-acre tract of land, uh, which was at twelve thousand three hundred and the forty-eight, forty-three acre, uh, tract of land at twenty thousand per acre. What I found, uh, when I went to inspect the site, that the sixteen-acre tract is the worst tract of, out of the whole tract there, uh, uh, that's being developed. It's at the rear and it's by a set of railroad tracks. What does that mean in market terms? It means that market desirability is low and the marketability of that land is not good. So, for you to buy it and, and, and build a school next to a railroad tracks is solving a problem for the developer because that's land that he would have to, uh, sell at a reduced price if he were to build lots, and it would take longer to sell. So, he, he comes out winning and also all the infrastructure that's leading to that tract there, uh, BISD can benefit just as he will benefit by the school being built there. So, the infrastructure cost should be very minimal. But let me also explain that I heard some things saying that BISD establishes a price by being a typical buyer. BISD is not a typical buyer. This is not a typical purchase. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna define to you what, uh, uh, the market value costs, a, uh, the definition of market va, uh, value. It says buyer and seller are typically motivated. This is not a typical buyer and seller. So, take that out of your mind. And what I've heard also that appraised value is not market value, that's not true. Appraised value is market value unless you ask for something else. If you ask for fire sale value, if you ask for reproduction value, if you ask for replacement value, but in this instance, this is market value. What concerns me is that one person or a group of people are deciding what is fair market value without any facts or what price BISD should pay. The process that's being established here and the precedent that's being established here lends itself to corruption because you have no checks and balances. You are the checks and balances. But I know of no entity, public entity, no lender that does this kind of business without having land appraised to see that, make sure that you're paying fair market value. Because we're talking about infrastructure that may be included or not included, but there's no specs, there's no cost, there's no plans to, 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 to be part of this. But the land value that I'm giving you is true and correct. If I'm wrong, prove me wrong, get, do the right thing by getting an appraiser. Contrary to what, um, I've been hearing about, uh, the, the, the plans, I, I believe the, the, the planning that you're doing is good, the, uh, the, the reasoning is good, but that doesn't justify paying exorbitant prices for land that is not worth what, what is being sold to us or for us being taken to the cleaners. Uh, the cost of a, a lift station or the cost of infrastructure can easily be calculated and they should be given to, to us and to you to know what exactly we're paying for, not just three million dollars and there it goes. I have a, a friend of mine here who has land near there with two thousand, lean your feet on, 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 on Highway two eighty-one, near there, two miles from there or three miles from there, that's selling at fifteen thousand dollars an acre with utilities nearby. Fifteen thousand, and you're paying for two miles difference, so you're paying forty thousand, forty-five thousand an acre and sixty-three thousand acre? That doesn't make sense. I think if you were to get it appraised and let the developer get an appraisal also and, and, and come to the meetings of mine, that would be fair and responsible. Because you have a, you have a, uh, you have to protect the public to make sure that we don't lose confidence because how can we vote for bond issues if you're gonna be making decisions like this? Believe me, if y'all do this, I will never vote for another bond issue.
Five seconds, sir.
And I won't trust what I'm being told because this is not right and it's not, it's not following prudent practices to protect those who trusted you when you proposed a bond issue to us.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Moises Gonzalez, land purchase.
Good evening, uh, gentlemen of the board, Ms. Calvane, and, uh, all the public. Dr. Scuero, could I please have a one-minute warning when my time expires?
Yes, sir.
Now, I've heard addressed, you know, uh, transportation being addressed and as, as again, as a parent, my name is Moises Gonzalez, and as a parent of, of, uh, three children of my own, also legal guardian of another child who are in the school district, and this particular area where all this construction is gonna be done, is land purchase is gonna be done, directly affects me and, and my children. I've heard everything addressed from transportation, cost of per acre, uh, what it would cost. I've heard everything addressed from transportation, cost of per acre, what it would cost if it's a bus school, whether it's a walking school, yet we haven't really defined what is a walking school, or what will it truly be walking schools? Whether it's designated as a walking school or not, our people are going to walk. And if you saw those pictures of that congestion in that area, that's only going to add to the congestion of traffic in that area, whether it's a walking school or not. And I've heard all these issues about money and cost per acre and transportation costs, but what I haven't heard is, is the infrastructure in place for the safety of the children to walk to these schools? That should be our primary concern. Now, if these are going to be walking schools, is it a safe area? Is it designated area for children to actually walk to school? And how many parents will truly have their children walk to school? I'm the father of a six-year-old, but if I'm at that two-mile, a mile and a half area where it's designated a walking school, and I will not provide a transportation, my child is not going to walk. I'm going to transport him. So now we're going to have a mixture of children walking, plus an increased and heavier flow of traffic, which ultimately affects the children's safety. That's what we should take into consideration. As a parent, and if I have to pick, and it's a hands-down, it's a no-brainer for me. How does it pick between the safety of my child and increased transportation cost? Well, I'm going to pick the safety of my child. So has there been research, and is there infrastructure in place for there to be a true walking school? And is it safe for our children? Moving on to the, when this research is done, has it been done in conjunction with the city? The city does have a ten-year plan. We need to be proactive and not reactive. Given the timeline for these projects to be completed, by the time they are completed, are we still going to have those calculations? Or are we going to start busing in children again? And ultimately, those costs are going to be there. So let's be proactive and not reactive. Sit down with the city, look at their ten-year plan, sit down with the county, there's only two ways Brownsville can grow. So look at that and be proactive. Go out there and build it maybe in an area that, sure, eventually we're going to have the bus. Number one, is it safer? Number two, are we going to have the bus anyways? So look at it from that perspective, and sit down with the city and with the county. Another thing I want to talk about is the committees. When you appoint committees for either the bond, to oversee the bond, or any type of committee, I asked the board to please select members of the community who have, we have a mixture of those members of the community. Pick members who have children in BISD, pick members who have been involved in BISD for several years, and not have just members who are there for whatever reasons. But have a true mixture and representation on those committees. Just keep that in mind when you make those appointments, please. And I'm going back to the election date. I've been here before on that, I'll be short and I'll be brief. Members were elected for three years, and not three years and a half, they were moved without consensus of your constituents, and it needs to be moved back. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank, sorry I can't read the last name, I'll just say Frank M. Land.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, and Mr. Superintendent. My name is Frank Montanaro, I'm just a local citizen, pay taxes, got kids at school, I have kids that already went through BISD. The only reason I'm here is about the land purchase, and I have some questions here. Mr. O'Malley just answered a lot of those questions for me, because I'm no expert. That's why we hire experts, I guess. To end this controversy, I don't know why somebody doesn't just get an appraisal. Then I'd know who to believe. A lot of citizens' concerns are, we don't know, are we overpaying or not? Anybody in business knows that you get an appraisal. The only time I wouldn't get an appraisal if I know I'm getting a real good deal. From the commentaries I've had, apparently we're not getting a good deal, so let's just get an appraisal, and we can end the controversy. What makes it a lot more interesting here is a board member leaves, three weeks later, land is purchased, hits the press that there's an overpayment of land, a bond committee is automatically formed. You figure the bond committee would be formed before you buy the land to make the recommendation of order by the land. Then you get all, another commentary, somebody at the school saying that it doesn't matter, because seventy-five percent is being paid by the school, by the state, I mean. That doesn't make sense. Everybody says it's for the children. I think it's about the money. All I want is somebody to recommend getting appraisal done, and that would solve the problem. I saw the other presentation the administration had, monitoring for special kids, traffic. I don't know where the school is built, I think you're still in monitors anyway. Traffic, I think you're still going to have traffic jams wherever you build a school, in the morning, and probably in the afternoon when they leave. Market value? It's all based, Mr. O'Malley answered that question for me, I think it's based on a willing buyer. If I'm selling land for twenty thousand an acre and I can't sell it, BISD comes and wants to pay me fifty thousand an acre, I don't think that makes him a willing buyer. It'd be different if I, if it was my money, I'd get an appraisal, and market value would be a lot different. As far as buying land, Mr. Colunga mentioned about going in and going anonymously, or not knowing it's BISD that's buying it. I think the price of land goes up automatically when you're looking for land. You go to a neighborhood, you want to buy a house, you try to buy one that's for sale. You knock on a house and say, are you selling your house? I'll sell you my house, make me an offer. I'm going to give it to you way above market value, because I'm not selling. If you're out looking for land, that's not for sale, it's going to cost you more. To me, that's common sense. Get a Realtor. Tell them where you want to buy the land, they'll do the legwork for you. They'll even go out anonymously, say, well, I got a buyer that wants to buy. They'll bring you, tracks the land, they'll give you acres, just tell them what part of town you want, they'll do the legwork for you. Charge you four or five percent, it's cheaper sending school employees. Plus, I bet you they'll do a better job, that's their job. All I hear is about the kids, I don't think this issue has anything to do with the kids, I think it's more about the money. We need to spend that money wisely, you know. They confuse me with transportation, with busing, with traffic flow. I don't really think that has anything to do with the purchase of the land, if you look at the numbers correctly. They're just throwing numbers at it, they don't make any sense. If somebody could clarify it with an appraisal, I think a lot of people would have less questions on this. Eminent domain has been brought up, said that it happened a couple of years ago. You try to do an eminent domain after you buy the school, the land, of course it's going to be worth more. You do an eminent domain usually before you build. You buy the land, you build the school, and then you try to eminent domain around it, of course it's going to be worth more. I mean, that's just common sense, so that eminent domain theory doesn't work at all. Of course the land's good, that half acre's going to be worth more, because the school's already there, everything around it's already worth more. So all I'm asking the board is somebody can, I don't know if this can be.
Ten seconds, sir.
If somebody can do something about it and take a closer look at it, and just get an appraisal and make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Pastor Alveda, number sixteen, item.
This is my third time here, I watch all on TV, like I tell you, because this is one of the best shows to watch. It's going to be getting more interesting, because you all have a tough job to do. And I think you all better put on your deep diving, you know, one hundred and thirty-five million dollars is hard to manage. They no easy decisions. Second-guessing is very easy. I can judge you better after you make something than before. But honesty is all, who is honest. I talked, or in talking with Mr. Cortez, I found out that the board had found a legal way to extend itself six months by moving the election from May to November. I came, I wasn't going to come initially, I had no intention of coming, because I thought, well, this is all political. But I came to the policy meeting on Monday and saw Mr. Rolando Aguilar at the helm. I've known Mr. Aguilar since nineteen sixty-six, when he was a teacher in Cummings. And today he's in the hospital, and, you know, we're honoring the directors. You all have a lot of problems, I don't think it's all your problems. One good thing's going to come out of this is that, you know, community does not get involved, but one hundred and thirty-five million dollars has gotten a lot of us involved. And you know, you all need our help. My point is this, with one guy standing here attacking you because four of you went to eat, and it's legal that all seven of you go to eat, and all the, with the pictures being painted, I'm asking you to throw out there a bone. I'm pleading, begging. I'm trying to work on, leave everything aside, I'm trying to work on your honesty, your integrity, your humility, ethic, the smallest thing that you got, and turn this election back. That's the least of your problems, when you go to an election in May or November. Because if you don't, I'm not going to raise a finger against you, that ain't what I do. But you know, Mr. Aguilar heads this policy. But I came last meeting, and a lot of things were said, if you saw me on TV, you know, they said, like the pastor said, like the pastor said, like the pastor, seven times, like I said, but no one got what I said. I feel I was patronized. I looked up that word in my Spanish dictionary, and bring your Spanish word, patronize, and the first thing I came is to what my grandmother used to call me. Me dieron atole con el dedo. This is going to fall, a poor man's wisdom is always despised. We never listen to the poor man's wisdom. You have to be dead, rich, famous, or have a degree to be wise. No, you have to have that to be educated. Some of the most stupid people I know are educated. Some are millionaires, and they're real stupid. If not, this is going to fall among the wrong decisions we've done. Bush and the war, Congress and the fence, the city ninety-one not doing something about the impact tax here, we're messing with impact tax. And the move in the election, it'll have a ripple effect. Because it's been moved, someone told me, it's legal. Abortion's also legal, they don't make it right. Okay, legal don't make it right. And I'm pleading to, you say, eat crow, well, eat crow. We had a right, we can do it, you elected us. We were asleep. If I'd have seen that, I read the paper every day, must have been out of town. I did not see that you put it on the paper twice before it was ever voted. Had I seen it, maybe they're cold. But I got to you, the city ain't asleep no more. You're under scrutiny. Fair scrutiny, unfair scrutiny? Because there sounds fair scrutiny too, in all fairness, but still scrutiny. And the least of your problems is when you get elected, whether it's three or four years. What do I think if four years is better? Let us decide, but let us decide by putting on a referendum after you brought it back. My point is that you had no right taking it forward. Bring it back, you said, we have a right because of law. The law is legal. The laws sometimes are not right, they're only legal. You had a legal right, but you did not have an ethical right? And you know, we're honoring all the directors, so let's honor Rolando Aguilar. Charge him five dollars, take his phone away. What I do at church, you show up with a phone, ring, charge five dollars.
Your time's over, Pastor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Honor Mr. Aguilar by moving it back, that's a real honor.
Our next speaker is Patrick Hames, and he did not include a subject to be discussed.
I believe I put miscellaneous, it's Patrick Hammers.
Well, miscellaneous is not a subject, dude.
I'll remember that in the future, sir, thank you. Dr. Scuero, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board. Again, a tough audience to follow. I like Pastor Alveda, was at the policy meeting in December, when we first talked about some of these issues. He was at the last boarding, board meeting, and I'm here again tonight. Usually I pick on Mr. Colunga when we have subcommittee meetings on the topics of English or English saying. But today I want to go back to a little bit of history. The point, the only reason I'm here tonight, it's not to belabor what's been said at Doorwood and what's been written, but it's what we said before, the public trust. Trustees, public trust, and the faith we need to have in you to make the right and best decisions for the district, and for our students, and for our community. So let's go back a little bit and brief history. Two thousand and three, we had the Comptroller's Report, the Strangor Report, and in that report it indicated that board members at that time had inappropriate interactions with vendors. We go to November of two thousand and four, Mr. Gary Looney was the insurance consultant for this district, hired to negotiate the insurance, the teacher health insurance contract. At a board meeting here in November two thousand and four, he asked some of the board members, some of you who'd been newly elected at the time, if you had contact with vendors. Some of you raised your hand. Some of you said, we didn't know better at the time, but once we get the training, we won't make that mistake. Spring of two thousand and five, Mr. Looney's contract was up, and the teacher insurance committee, one person per school and departments, unanimously recommended Mr. Looney be rehired. In the May meeting, it was tabled three to three, and he was rehired four to three in June of two thousand and five. And his contract was not renewed last year, in June, in June of two thousand and six. Go to November of two thousand and five, and we had a voluntary insurance committee, or subcommittee, select committee, that was out, who had worked very hard, looking at voluntary insurance products for the district. They came to a voluntary insurance meeting in November in this room, made a tremendous presentation to this board, or to the board at that time, and we had board members who disparaged their efforts that time, and asked, one board member specifically asked a vendor if he was happy with the contract or the money he was receiving. This is what damages the public trust. We have no idea, and I have no idea, and I have no opinion one way or the other, of what happened back in December. But it's the public trust. If there is a history of things not being fair or not being right, then there's going to be a mistrust between the community and the people that work for this district, and you, and we don't want that. We don't want that. So all I'm asking, and all we're asking, is for you to take that into consideration when you make decisions. Look how you've come across, consider how you want to come across. We want to believe in you. Give us the opportunity to do so, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Rolando Trevino, and there is no subject to be discussed.
Mr. Board President, board members, Superintendent Hector Gonzalez, administration, public audience. It makes me laugh when I hear some of these things that I've heard. For one thing, I've seen ex-board members speak over here and say, oh, this is what's right, this is what's right. Well, I'm going to go back down memory lane a little bit, to nineteen eighty-six, and I know for a fact there's a few board members that were on, that have been present here, if they're not present here now. Back in nineteen eighty-six, there was a monitor brought in. That monitor was brought in for governance, which equates to micromanagement. At that time, those same board members voted to sell the Transportation Department, which again, they had to rebuy, which was a fiasco. So I'm not impressed with their comments. Now we're going to the needless reputation of vendors. I've been with board members, and there are social events, where you're having dinner, where you're having a couple beers, where you're having a Coke, whatever. There's nothing wrong in that, and I've been, with the exception of Rolando Aguilar and Susan Galván, I've been with the rest where there was vendors involved. Okay? There was no business taught, but they shouldn't talk about the rest of the board members. We're talking about November. I heard the AOB and all them state themselves, as we are a representation of eighteen, nineteen hundred members. Yet I heard an English educator state that she wanted to keep it in November. So I've been a union exec, I was the chairman for the Standing Committee for International Paper Company with members of over five thousand people. Before I can speak for all members, as an officer, I better hold a meeting with all five thousand. In their cases, eighteen, nineteen hundred members, they better hold it. To make it legal and to be able to speak for them, they better hold that meeting. There's a couple board members, and I was with. There's a couple board members, and, and I was with approximately a hundred and fifty people that I know. They all consisted of the county, city, port, business owners and everything. They were very upset, very disappointed with two or three board members calling them ignorant and dumb. And you're wondering why I say ignorant and dumb. When those two and three board members come out and state that the people, the eleven thousand, ten thousand more that voted in November didn't know the issues or the people that they were voting for, that's calling them ignorant and dumb, like they state. The majority, a lot of them have not only their bachelors, but their masters, their doctors. They are attorneys, they're judges, retired judges, they're county officials, city officials, port officials. They were very, very insulted by those comments. Going back to what I've been talking about. Board members continue to put things on the agenda that's reputations. "Oh, man, we gotta get it through, we gotta get it through, we gotta get it through." I'm, the superintendent who's doing his damnedest to correct the problems with nineteen schools is not having that time because sixty percent of his time is being put on agendas every, for every, for every meeting that they have. The people are tired of it. If there are sanctions by the state and by the federal government, the ones that are gonna pay the price are the children, the employees, the community, and most of all, the taxpayer, because they're gonna have to supplement the lost income. And you employees, when you don't get your raise because there was sanctions, and you don't get your benefits because there was sanctions, and these students that don't get their supplies because the government cut back, then you all sit on that board and state, "It was, I'm happy I did it 'cause I didn't give the superintendent the opportunity, the tools to accomplish the position he needed to take care of my agenda." We got board members putting more agendas than administration. That to me constitutes governance and micromanagement. We need to allow the superintendent to do his job, for the administration to do their job, and educators to go out and help the superintendent. All employees are out there to help the superintendent. Thank you very much. The fact is, ladies and gentlemen, that's a team of eight up there, not a team of five. Worked together, and like I stated before, those eleven thousand people that came out to vote are very upset with the remarks made by a few board members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public, uh, audience period. Uh, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have one more. Mr. Roberto Barrera, land.
Thing about not having common sense when you do dealings, and I kinda agree. But buying land from forty-five thousand and sixty thousand per acre is really not using your common sense. I'm not a person knowledgeable in buying or selling land. But if he, but I do have three degrees, and they're not from HEB. Thus, I have enough su- common sense that being limited in land appraising, I would have had this land appraised. If I was a school board member, I would strongly suggest, I would push, I would encourage, and cajole Mr. Simmons to donate the land and name the school after Mr. Simmons. If that's what we need to do to get the land at a cheaper rate. Mr. Hudson did it. We might've had to do some, what do you call, uh, put some piping and so forth, but he still, he gave the land to, to the school district free. With such headlines that a lot of these board members went to dine, Angus Steaks and Wine at a Pampers Restaurant somewhere. And then the other thing that we're buying land that is very expensive, it really puts a bad image on those people down here in South Texas. When I was a counselor here for a long time, when I traveled to Odessa, those areas out there, and I, I said that I was from South Texas, they said, "Mr. Barrera, that's a corrupt area down there." It is embarrassing, you know? We had the Conrao Cantúl, we had the Brick Marbolecos, the Area Parisios on cocaine and so forth. That also gives us a very bad image.
Sir, let's try to refrain from mentioning names, please.
All right, thank you, Doctor. The people that were selected to look for land, they're not knowledgeable in that area, they're educators and superintendents of maintenance and so forth. So, get up in appraisal, just like some of the people have mentioned. This land is not being bought for a profit. Tell Mr. Neil, uh, Simons, Neil Simmons, that it's not for a profit, it's for the schoolchildren. Stress that point to him. And if he's an all-American man, he makes his money, and this is his, uh, uh, city, maybe he'll go along. Push him on that area. Ladies and gentlemen, and this board, I'm still calling you all honorable. Let's distinguish ourselves from the bad people in our county in the past. Let's set high standard for ourselves to erase this bad, crooked image that has prevailed in this area where you and I live. Just because trustees were awarded tax bond money, it does not mean you will throw it away. Waste it or just hand it over without an appraisal to that landowner who has no soft spot for us taxpayers. It's only greed, greed, and greed. I strongly suggest that this prospective deal be extended or set aside until the buyer, you people, and the seller, Mr. Simmons, after a professional appraised land and a negotiated a reasonable price, market value of said land. Board members, listen to us, concerned citizens, who not on, who want nothing but the best in education for Brownsville students. Common sense must prevail rather than greed by these raw landowners. It doesn't pass the smell test. It's a matter of ethics. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes, that concludes our comment, public, uh, public comment period. At this time, Mr. Escobana, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, sir, there's, I believe you all have requested number twenty to be moved, uh, because of some, uh, travel issues.
Correct.
Also, we have some attorneys from out of town, one from Houston and one, uh, from the Mid Valley that are also going to be presenting tonight. And that would be item number thirty-one. Uh, and, uh, I'm requesting if the board president, at his discretion and at the pleasure of the board, would take that up as well in executive session out of, uh, out of turn, uh, by proper motion. And, uh, one gentleman does have to get home to Houston tonight, and the weather is, is becoming quite inclement.
Well, this time, I'd like to make a motion to move item B thirty-one, consultation with attorney, uh, into closed session, uh, immediately after public audience and before D twenty, which is the first item that we're gonna discuss under consent agenda. And, and we can also, we're gonna do that under closed session too? Yeah, but, but we need to go to executive first. Okay? And I guess, if I understood you correctly, D twenty will also go into executive?
Twenty can be discussed right now, then.
Right now?
Immediately after, we can go to closed session.
Okay, so we'll discuss D twenty right now, and then we'll go into closed session to discuss only, uh, B thirty-one, and then we'll come back out for, uh, consent agenda.
That's correct.
Do I have a second?
Second. Uh, do, uh, all. Change the order of the day.
Correct. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, Mr. Parrish is not in the room. Uh, at this time, we will discuss item D twenty. Recommend awarding RFP number zero seven dash zero eight one to Med Review LLC in the amount not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars and twenty-five percent of claim recoveries to perform the BISD Medical Health Plan and Prescription Drug Audit. Services to be provided, subject to the district's leasing funding. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Mr. Parrish.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lehman, um, uh, discussion, discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lehman.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, open it up. Uh, I wa- I want clarification, um, on the actual, the recovery twenty-five percent. And, you know, I believe that there, that there, I guess there are two components. Uh, one would be the actual medical plan, health plan, and then the, the PBM audit. Is that correct, Mr. Gonzalez?
That is correct. You're, you're actually gonna be auditing the medical plan, making sure it's in compliance, and also, uh, the prescription, and make sure we're in compliance. And then if there's any recoveries to be made because of overpayments and so on and so forth, then, uh, we will recover that, and, uh, they will be doing that at a twenty-five percent fee.
Okay. The, um, my question then, on the PBM side, which is the pharmaceutical end, uh, that is a, should be a quick analytical process. And usually is driven by contingency, because we do have a contract with the current TPA, and the current TPA is the PBM. So, and I argued when the contract came before me as board president, of course, we never signed the contract with the, with the TPA. And I think we've gone, I don't know if you've signed it now, Dr. Scobeto, have you signed a contract? So, that's going into the second year. And I know that we wanted to put certain language, and I, I wanna make sure, I don't know if, if Med Review is here or any, any representative, okay, that they understand that there were changes requested that might not be reflected or reflecting in the, in the current contract. That, um, you will find that there are certain discounts that are, are not reverting back to the district. And we would like to make sure that those are, are made aware and that we recover every cent and dollar, because I believe it's close to a quarter of a million dollars is going back to the TPA, uh, for a group this size. And, uh, with that said, I just wanna make sure that they understand that, and they're aware of it.
If I may, yes, uh, Dr. Scobeto, members of the board. Absolutely. Uh, we haven't had an audit at all. I mean, this is just, this is just a fact, we've never had an audit in this, in this area. It's a big area, we all know that. Health insurance and prescription is, is, is one of the big ticket items for this district. Since we went into it, we've never had an audit, a, a push for an audit, we finally got one. And, and the gentleman knows exactly what you're talking about. We will review the contract with him, everything that has been in the minutes of the, from the board concerning what needs to be done and what needs to be reviewed. And we will be reviewing that in the compliance audit. I think Mr. Sanchez met with the gentleman this afternoon, and everything you said is, is absolutely correct. We will be doing those things concerning the audit itself, the compliance part of it, make sure we're adhering to the letter of the contract and that we are, are receiving back the money that we said we're gonna be receiving back. Uh, I think I've asked the, the company on numerous occasions when they're gonna send us the check. They're still saying that they're, they're, they're in review. As soon as we, we, we get this audit done, I think it'll be, all be cleared up. So, uh, Mr. Sanchez, unless you have anything else to, to comment on, on that, uh?
Thank you, Superintendent Gonzalez. Uh, I, I really don't have, um, anything to comment. Um, we, we spoke to Mr. Richard Good, who's he, who is here from Colorado, um, and explained to them the, the compliance audit, talked about the contract, talked about the rebates, uh, on prescription and these kinds of things, uh, the concerns that Mr. Lehman has expressed. And he's well aware of that, uh, unless, I don't wanna answer any questions specifically from him.
No, well, I just wanna interject that in the audit timeframe that is given, uh, I, I know that the more intense would be the actual medical health plan audit, because that's more intense, and it's, it's all driven by whatever information they're able to get from the plan administrator.
Right.
So, if they're not gonna cooperate, then, you know, we'll be here next year talking about it. But the PBM's a very simple, I think it's a, a no-brainer process, and I'd like to see in the timeframe that accelerated and given to us within a, you know, a quick timeframe. Uh, and if there are any considerations or any advisements that the consultant or the, the auditor will be doing to make sure that they give us the industry standards, because I think we were misled by the previous consultant help. I mean, I think that contract favored the TPA and not district. So, i- if there are discrepancies or anomalies in the contract, please share with us what a better, what, what constitutes, or what could constitute a better contract for us in our favor.
We should only be visiting with the auditor on this, so I think that the first thing we need to do is move on with the audit. And, and as we go through it, we will be meeting with Mr. Good and be able to, to, uh, explain to him what it is that we need and any advisement he can give back to the board, and he will be presenting. Yes, sir?
If I can just make one comment, uh, your remarks are, are very much on target.
Please, sir, would you just please state your name for your record, who you represent?
I'm sorry, I'm Richard Good, I'm a principal in and senior vice president of Med Review. Your comments, Mr. Lehman, are, are very much on target. The bulk of the time and effort for this project is devoted to the medical claims portion of the audit because there's far more data there to sort through. Uh, your pharmacy benefits plan, as I understand it at this point, uh, only comprises roughly five percent of your total health plan cost, which is far smaller than national averages. And we have clients right now whose pharmacy benefit costs are running twenty-five and thirty percent of their total health plan costs. So, in your case, the amount of data that's involved in, in this particular pharmacy analysis, uh, is much smaller than a typical exercise that we would do. Once we receive the claims file, uh, from Express Scripts through Mutual of Omaha, uh, for the prescription claims, that analysis regarding manufacturer rebates, et cetera, is, you are correct, a very simple and a very quick exercise to do. The time will be devoted into actually getting our hands on the claims file. The, uh, which will not happen until certain confidentiality agreements are executed, et cetera, uh, because none of these firms without those documents hand over the claims file. The, uh, the medical claims audit is a far more complicated matter, and that's what this, this timeframe is based on. The, the pharmacy exercise, once we actually get the claims file, isn't even worthy of a timeframe because it literally is a matter of a few days to do that.
Well, I just, like I said, I, I hope you don't hold back the entire, uh, audit and, and give us, uh, bring forth the PBM portion in partiality to the entire package.
No, that's perf- that's perfectly doable.
That's what I wanted to make clear. And give us, uh, guidance if the contract is not in our favor, because I know that we own this poli- I mean, we are the insurance. And any benefits and any, any, any discounts and any hidden discounts should revert back to the owner. A- as the contract is written, it is not, and we made concessions, or the TPA made concessions, which might not reflect in the contract because I never signed a contract. I don't know what's in the contract. So, and, and count, you know, we, we were gonna, we were gonna have to rely on, on, on going back to, to, I guess, tape of the previous year's agendas to, to make sure what was discussed and what's in the actual wording of the contracts.
A, a standard part of the audit process is, the first step, uh, in the audit process is to take your contract with Mutual of Omaha and break it down and, and do an analysis of what is documented correctly, what's not documented correctly. Uh, you would be amazed what's, what's sometimes not documented in contracts like this, or what's not made very clear.
But I wanna make sure you get the right contract, with the right.
So do we.
With the right, yes.
But, no, that's the first step in the process, uh, to make sure that you in fact have a working tool in the form of the contract that protects your, your interests, and if you don't, to let you know that.
Any other comments or questions for the board? Thank you, sir. I have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will now entertain item B thirty-one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters in closed meeting as pursued to Tax Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero eight two, and five five one point zero eight four. Board now goes to closed session. Item B thirty-one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters, do I have a motion?
Mr. Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the settlement that discussed in executive session with Al Cardenas Masonry, Max Installation, Rio Mechanical, D Wilson Construction, Soller Construction, Secret and Hall, in the amounts discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Cortez, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, general function, I have received a list from my colleagues indicating there's no need for discussion or deliberation of the following agenda items. Item, uh, general function A, number eleven, thirteen, fourteen, under B, payments.
May I interrupt, Mr. Board President?
Yes, sir.
Item sixteen, I, I, I'm sorry, I arrived late.
That is circled.
And I don't know what was discussed, any corrections or comments on item six of the Roman numeral, in adopt, or recommending to approve the minutes as read for tonight? I mean, I'm sorry, for item five, excuse me.
Item five.
The reason that, that item, the way it reads, it's, it's an item being put by administration, and I don't think that's correct.
I'm sorry, you're looking at item five?
Item sixteen.
Item sixteen. Mr. Gonzalez?
Just for clarification purposes, that's not an item from administration. There was an item placed by a board member, and we, we, the policy is very clear that a board member writes the agenda item and will put it in just as they, they submitted.
Okay, well, I caution...
But it's not a recommendation from, from administration.
Okay, because I didn't see any signature. So, I cautioned this board that under BBA, local and legal, as a matter of fact, and BJ legal and local, that the recommendations are reserved to the superintendent. And he is the, the education leader and chief executive officer of the district. So, I don't know why, in previous formats, I, I guess this, Mr. Cortez, you put, you put this item on?
This is an item placed by Mr. Cortez, yes.
Okay. So, previously, you had correctly put it on there as an action item, and not as a recommendation item. So, just want to caution you that that, the recommendations are, are reserved to the superintendent. So, I don't know if you want to...
We can reword it.
Well, it's already...
We, we can't reword it or pull it...
You can't reword it, I don't, I mean, I, I would caution board members not, I mean, I'll abstain, because that, the recommendations are reserved to the, to the superintendent. So, and I, now, did you read it? Or were copies given to you, counsel?
Unfortunately...
It wasn't copied.
...out and not back to my office if I will talk.
There again, Mr. Cortez, like I said, you should have been, I mean, it's a courtesy, been told that, it, to me, it's not appropriately posted. So, I just cautioned this board, the recommendations are reserved as a exercise in duty of the superintendent. And I don't think board members have the power to recommend under BJ, BJA and BA legal and local. I would just caution the board.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Salania. We'll be, we'll be paying very close attention for the remainder of this meeting. Okay, where, where was I? Let me just restart. Under consent agenda, we will not discuss eleven, thirteen, fourteen. Under B, payments eighteen. C, recommend approval for RFQs nineteen. Let me see, twenty. Twenty was moved, and we've already taken care of it, addressed it properly. Under closed meeting, A personnel matters, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Thirty was, twenty-nine was pooled, thirty will be discussed. Twenty-two and twenty-three will be discussed, and twenty-one will be presented. Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the...
Move to accept.
Excuse me. Twenty-two and twenty-three have been circled?
Yes.
Mrs. Galavan, circle twenty-two and twenty-three.
Was it for pool or for discussion?
For discussion.
Yes.
So that we will discuss twenty-two and twenty-three? Okay, so, so we will not have to discuss twenty-two or twenty-three, but you will make a comment? Okay, that's, okay, that's fine. We will not discuss twenty-two and twenty-three.
So, are there consent items?
Twenty-two and twenty-three will be approved under the consent agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Powers, do I have a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Mr. Layman, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, in lieu of the fact that, that there was no discussion on twenty-two and twenty-three, I think for the benefit of the audience that's been waiting to see who the coaches are going to be, and I know we have a group of gentlemen out here that, that might be interested in who their coach is going to be, I'd like to, to announce the coaches, if I may.
Sure, by all means.
I want to congratulate them, and I thank the board for approving them, that we have excellent, we had a good quality applicants for coaches this year. I, I was pleased, pleasantly surprised at, at the quality of applicants that we had, hard choices with so many good applicants. But let me tell you that Porter High School, congratulations, that Dr. Dennis E. Parker will now be the head coach at Porter High School.
Is he here?
And the head coach for Rivetta High School, very fortunate to have very good candidates there also, want to congratulate and, and welcome him back. He used to be with us, and, and has decided to come back and join us, and that's Coach Helms for Rivetta High School.
Mrs. Galavan?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate our new coaches, and welcome to the Brownsville team, and let's go have a winning season, right?
Oh, yes.
I, I did all that. Any other comments up in the board? Okay, if not, we move on to item number twelve, recommend approval to adopt update seventy-eight and miscellaneous policies. I circled this one because Mr. Aguilar is, is not present with us, and he's the chairman of the policy committee, and I would really feel more comfortable if he were here. I know that personally I have a concern with, with CFC Local, with the way it was worded out, I believe it's different than from it was, and the way it was on, on the policy meeting. Mr. Gonzalez, is, is there a, an urgency to adopt this tonight?
Yes, there is an urgency to adopt one policy tonight. And Mr. Pinera, that's the, the policy concerning evaluations of teachers. I think that's very urgent, and, and I'll, I'll pass to Mr. Pinera, because he knows exactly what policy number that is.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Dr. Scovelo, members of the board? The policy Mr. Gonzalez is referring to is DNA, it's a PDS waiver. We have been talking about this for some time now, and I think our staff is anxiously awaiting at the campuses to see which way we're going to go with a PDS waiver. So, I would strongly urge that we at least look at this one tonight. DNA?
DNA, okay, that's what I thought you said.
DNA, right.
DNA, DNA. Are there any, I mean, if it's okay with my colleagues, I would like to, to, to adopt policy DNA, which is apparently urgent, and postpone the rest of the policies until the chairman is present. I think we owe it as a gesture of respect that, that his chairman we keep him present. At this point, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item number twelve, only policy DNA. Is that local or legal? Local. Or to adopt policy DNA local and postpone the rest of the policies for update seventy-eight and miscellaneous until, until further notice. Mr. Gonzalez, are you okay with that motion?
That's fine, okay.
Okay. Do I have a second?
He's okay with a, a second.
Second by Mr. Powers, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item fifteen, discussion, reconsideration, and possible action on real property acquisitions from El Valle Investments. Mr. Colunga?
Thank you. The, agenda item came up as a, in response to new information that dealt with the process, or at least in considering the question about appraisals, and also in reviewing the contract, the, or the agenda items specified, the contingency on environmental study, as well as the, the providing title or true title, and also, I had been interested in the process or involvement of the bond committee, in which if there were questions that were surfacing about the, the process or the purchase, that it involved the, the bond committee to, to review the information. Of course, since then, there's been quite a bit of information that's come from administration on the whole process, so I think that is answering a, a lot of the questions. I, I did want to ask on some of the questions that I had submitted previously to Mr. Gonzalez, including the, I had inquired about the policy and whether or not there, there was notice posted according to our policy that would at least allow a timeline of sixty days, mainly in placing this agenda item. I wanted to review the, the process. I know that the information I received, according to policy, the, the purchase did not apply under policy, because it was, purchase of bond money. So, the question I had would be, what, what are the checks and balances on the use of the bond money approved by voters for purchase of real property if the policy or the government code did not apply in those situations?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Scovelo, members of the board. It, it, I, I think we've addressed that to a certain extent during the presentations that we had, but make it a little bit clearer for, for everybody's sake is, checks and balances is with, is with ourselves. We, we had a bond committee that looked at it. We also have a, the state, this is bond money. We have complete audits that are done from the state concerning this issue. We have to report everything to the state. The state does all the audit reports, they come back, they're still auditing us back from nineteen ninety-seven bond. So, this is not, does not go, everything that we do has to be sent to the state. And those are checks and balances also in, in there, the state regulates a lot of this stuff, and we send it to the state, and I believe, Mr. Sanchez, do you have anything to add? I know that you do a lot of that, particularly with the, with the last bondage in nineteen ninety-seven, we're still doing that.
Right. We received a, a letter recently, Mr. Gonzalez, board members, asking us to have specific documents available to them, it's called a desk audit, and calling for specific documents that, that Mr. Tapia and I are working on to respond to the ninety-nine on. In addition, the, when you apply for, for bond money, there is a checklist, kind of like a checks and balance. These are the things and the projects that qualify, and this is where you can spend your money, and these are the projects that you may not spend your money on. So, they're already built in, into the process, and, and we cannot come, and, and we were trying to be very careful in the, in the four proposals that went out, we included only those projects that we knew basically qualified for funding. And so, you know, those are checks and balances. Who, who's at checks and balances? Administration is. We've become familiar, we're, I'm very familiar with, with bond issues, and I've done some in other districts, and, and so, you know, there is administrations' checks and balances, you are checks and balance, the committee that you appointed is the checks and balance, TEA has the checks and balance, the list of projects that are qualified and don't qualify are checks and balances. So, there's a, a whole series of checks and balance, they're not listed in any one particular area, but, but I think we have enough built in it, checks and balances that, that, that we can bring to you, and, and know that this has been a fair process. In the properties, were there any referrals on the properties as far as how you found out about the properties, or was it part of the search by the team?
It, it's been a, you know, we have not done anything differently than we've done in the past, Mr. Colunga or any board member here? This is the practice that we use in the district for years. This is not any different. We go out there, we search for land, we do have, sometimes realtors come and offer us land, sometimes we call realtors and we ask them for, for information, they point us to the right direction. We, we do a lot of things. Was that, Mr. Sanchez?
Usually when we go out and, and, Mr. Gonzalez, when we go out and, and we spot something is, you know, we avail ourselves to the tax office, all I need is an address, and I can go to the tax office, and the tax office can tell me who's the owner and who's not the owner of the particular property. And so, we do these kinds of things also.
We, we really search up and down, we, we know where we need it. Our research and assessment department does a beautiful job of, of finding this. We've been doing this for, for years, as far as, you know, we know, I mean, how did we know where to, to, to build Ben Bright? Where did we know where, where to build all the other schools that have come by through the years? Iturria, Garcia? Because we, we know where our population is and where we need to go. We go searching that area, we ask realtors. Sometimes realtors come by and give us information on land, they, they try to sell us land, sometimes they go and knock on doors for us. We've done that process before, and we, we call ourselves, and sometimes when we see a good piece of property, we'll find out who it is, and we'll ask them, you know, on, on that particular property. So, it, it's a lot of things that are involved, we need to negotiate. It's very unfair to say that we, we don't negotiate, we do negotiate with the, with the people. And we usually get a, a better price than when we went out there to do. So, you know, we needed a school for, or a site to help us with Vermilion and Gonzalez, we know that those schools are way overpopulated. We went and searched in that area, and said, we did buy some land there, and that was approved for the high school, we needed a, a particular area in that, in that direction. We also looked for that particular land to have infrastructure in it, which it does, it has sewer and water, we don't have to bring it in. It's very fortunate that that's controlled by a particular division that, that provides the water and sewer for us. Land north to it does not, land below it does not. You have to bring in water from PUB, you have to be for that infrastructure and so on and so forth. So, we look very cautiously at where, where we're, we're looking. So, as the referrals come in from people sometimes, sometimes they come in from realtors, sometimes they, we, we look for ourselves, so there's all kinds of process, but this is not anything different than we've done in the past.
Can you point to the, the specific pages that refer to infrastructure being a part of the property, or the, the price is built into the property that they will develop or improve the property?
There is a particular section on the contract that Mike has reviewed, I mean, Mike's the expert on this, he's the one that did all the contracts, and there is a very specific area in the contract that says that they will have sixty-foot roads on both sides for that sixteen acre, they will have all that water, sewer, everything up to the property line, that everything will be developed, and it also has a timeline, it will be done within a hundred and twenty days. So, those are very specific in the contract, there is no such thing as not having specificity on that contract. I'm not a lawyer, Mike is, and he handles that real estate for us. Yes, Mike?
Mrs. Salania?
Just a couple of more questions that Mr. Colunga asked regarding the environmental studies. I do know...
They're completed.
That they have been completed. I have reviewed one of them, and it was a negative finding. The second one, your attachment was missing, Oscar, by the way. But I understand that it's, it was also negative as well in terms of any findings. And your second question regarding title commitments, there are title commitments in place to ensure the titles of the land for the purchase price.
And in also the, the inspections or the, and the environmental, environmental study, did that include soil testing?
Mr. Tapia, I'll defer to him.
Yes, it, right, we do the standard environmental, soil test and everything that goes out there. Who, who did this one, Oscar? Rabakis? That's the typical environmental studies that we always do for all land that we purchase. We don't do it without any environmental that includes soil and soil testing, make sure it's clear.
Phase one only.
On phase one. If we find anything on the phase one, then we go to phase two.
The last comment, I just wanted to try to consider the process that has been done or followed, in which I feel that there should be an appraisal involved also. So, I would suggest to this board that we do some type of independent appraisal, just to have that information, if we are to consider that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I have no comment on that, that's strictly up to, to board decision-making. I, I want to say to this board is, this has already been approved, and it's under contract. There would have to be a modification to a contract if you wanted to do that, that would have to be reapproved.
I, I kind of...
And I would take that into closed session, or modification of contract.
I tend to agree to an extent with Mr. Colunga on having a land appraised, to have, you know, as backup material for... you know, as backup material for our information, independent of this appraised value and market value phenomenon.
The counselor has a question. Mr. Saldaña?
I didn't mean to interfere with your comments, Dr. Escuelo. I would be derelict to say that there are not some legal issues that need to be discussed, and I would like to consult with the board in executive session on that. I don't think they're overwhelming or serious, but perhaps having full consultation, given the fact that there are contracts in place right now, then that perhaps taking this up as an action item as to what the board wants to do with it subsequent to discussion in executive session, in my opinion, would be more appropriate so that all of the information is before the board as to the impact or the ramifications of their decision.
Thank you. Can I make a comment? Well, then, what I mean then is for future land purchases, everything I just said.
Okay. Mr. Lehman?
No, I just want to make a comment, and I know that I abstained on this issue, but for clarification and to satisfy doubt in Mr. Colunga, standard contracts in the state of Texas for property or land, the sole discretion of the appraisal is on the buyer, and that's the responsibility of the buyer. I mean, the seller could, he has his prize, we have a contract, if we wish to have an appraisal done, it's going to cost us, period. It's not going to, I don't know if it'll have any bearing on the seller, but if we want it, we can have it. The contract is not to preclude one way or the other, it's whether we want it or not, it's an option that is in the contract, and I don't know, I haven't seen the contract.
I'm not talking about that, Mr. Lehman, I'm talking about other issues as far as earnest money.
I know, but I mean, just not, exactly, well, that, just to satisfy what's being, I think, put on the table here, does this board, this body is going to, I guess, entertain the fact that we should go out and get an independent appraisal, and we can.
Mr. Dr. Escuelo, I move to move agenda item fifteen to closed session.
Before we have a motion, I'd like to finish the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As any more-
I want to clarify that, I mean.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Mr. Colunga, are you satisfied with your agenda item? Okay, Mr. Powers?
I move to put it in closed session.
Continue.
There's a motion to continue this discussion in closed session, second by Mr. Cortez. On a favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? A motion passes five to one with Mrs. Alvano voting against. Moving on to item sixteen, recommend approval to change the school board trust election from November two thousand seven back to May two thousand seven, Mr. Cortez.
I guess first, I'd like to ask, is there a specific problem with the way I requested it? Does it have any bearing on what we can and can't do on this item tonight?
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, I would refer that to legal counsel. I think it's providing adequate notices is what's supposed to be, but I don't know.
Yes, it does provide adequate notice as far as the Public Information Act is concerned. Mr. Lehman is correct, though, that it could be construed as somewhat incorrect language, which could be subject to modification by motion of the board at this point in time. If you want to move to modify your motion in order to clarify or, you know, to say that discussion and possible action to change the school board election, which would probably be the most appropriate one. However, the other side of the argument is that the administration here at this point has disclaimed that any origin as far as this agenda item is concerned. I think the clear, the record clearly reflects that this is Mr. Cortez's agenda item and not the administration's agenda item. So, it's really a question of how formal you all want to be as a board on the issue. I think as far as any open records discussion, open meetings discussion, that the notice is sufficient, that the public knows that that's what the issue is about. The rest is a technical issue, really, and it's up to the board and the board president as to how he would want to handle it.
Well, at this point, I'll ask Mr. Cortez if you would like to modify your, or reward your item.
I just make a comment, just for the benefit of Mr. Cortez, because he's a new trustee on the block. Recommendations are reserved as a power to the superintendent. We, I guess, on an action items, we reserve the right to consider items on the, and you had it properly posted before, I just, I saw it, and then I realized that that agenda item is not originating from, it makes it look like administration is recommending it, just for the perspective view. But in the future, I'd recommend that action items we put for consideration in action, just to be on the safe side.
Well, I think if you want to be proper, we can't really reward the item because that's been approved, what can be rewarded is a motion of any. Mr. Saldaña, am I correct?
That's what I was asking, if action had been taken, I didn't come in, if action had been taken prior to the meeting in approving the agenda item, so.
Yeah, the item's been approved, as read, so this cannot be changed, but the motion can, am I correct?
The motion can modify it, but like, the other side of it also, doctor, is, you know, this meeting's being recorded, it's videotaped, it's audio recorded, administration has clearly stated on the record, and I think there's no doubt that this is not an administrative item that's being referred to by administration. But it's your meeting, sir, and you can handle it as you see fit. Those are the, just, my job is to point out the issues to you, the decisions are to you as to how you, as presiding officer, you felt you feel it would be most appropriate to handle.
I think what we'll do, we'll discuss if anything, and then if there is a motion, it will be awarded appropriately. Mr. Colunga?
I just wanted to comment that the previous discussion had been something coming out of policy, policy committee that led to the discussion of an agenda item. I would also ask about how the previous change was made as far as what the language was and whether it came from the administration or from the policy committee.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to say?
These are all, yes, thank you, Dr. Escuelo, members of the board, these are all issues concerning policies. These are all, the board does, is in charge of policies, this is an item, an item that administration really doesn't get involved with, this is strictly policy in nature, we will adhere by policy, we are bound by law to adhere to the policies that y'all make. So, this is a policy issue, this is certainly not an administration issue, and it will never come from administration, regardless of whether it's this administration or any other administration, we don't get involved in this. So, all of these items, when they come, they become part of board, this is policy, because this is what, now, if you all vote one way or the other on this, to keep it or move it or whatever, we will adhere to that policy, and we'll facilitate it for you, but all of these are policy issues that need to be cleared through the board, so this is a policy issue, not an administrative issue.
Well, then, Mr. Saldaña, if it's proper, we'll discuss it and see if there's anything new to be said, because this has been discussed before, and then we'll take it from there. Mr. Cortez, since this is your item, I'll open the floor to you.
Thank you, Dr. Escuelo. I guess I want to ask a question, you brought something up, and I'm just a little bit curious, I haven't looked at it personally, but I've been told, and I'd like to see if someone in administration can tell me. The policy for term of board trustee was never adjusted even after the extension of term? Or was it modified as well?
I have looked at policy concerning this issue, just for the purpose of looking at policy. Local policy does not indicate one way or the other. It was never modified in any form or fashion, whether it was an oversight by prior administration to bring it back to the board for clarification of policy or what it may be, but it's not really, that I can find it, I don't know, Mr. Saldaña, you might know.
Dr. Escuelo, Mr. Cortez, basically, the local policy just addresses the years, that's all.
Three?
Yes. Actually, the policy is illegal, but that's a separate issue. The law says you can adjust the terms.
I'm aware of that, I'm just wondering with regards to local policy.
Regards to local policy, local policy only references the years, that, you know, place one and two will be in such and such a year, place three and four will be in such and such a year, five, six, and seven will be in such and such a year. That's all local policy addresses, so there's really no need to amend or go back and look at local policy.
Because it's in the same year, whether it was in Maryland.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, that was my question. Well, really, I have nothing new to say. The last time we were here, Mr. Powers said we can bring it back in January, and so, we kind of reworded it, brought it back, I brought it back, and I'm just hoping that we can put this to a vote today.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Colunga?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Escuelo. The previous discussion or the outcome from the last month's meeting, it was tabling the item from Mr. Powers' motion, and the item being brought back, I think I had raised a question as to, was that, what was the timeline? And at that time, it was mentioned it was indefinitely, but it was something that was mentioned that it would be for the next meeting. So, as we look at this particular item, I know it's something that may have different language from the previous item, but perhaps there can be a modification there as the language, but it did come from a policy committee with Mr. Aguilar, and that was something that would be appropriate to bring to the board if that were to be considered, and then tabled and then brought back. I don't see a policy problem. So, that's my comment.
If there are no more questions or comments from the board, do I have a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a comment.
Lehman?
In taking up the possibility of moving, and if this is the opinion of a board member and some of the constituents, we've heard, I mean, we have constituents that enjoy November, and some that might want to take it back to May, but I also referenced subtitles, see local organization and governance as it pertains to the education code. Notice that, and I don't mean to ponder on the pastor again, but, you know, the term of offices, the law does, does call for a trustee of an independent school district serves a term of three or four years. So, in counselor, I'd had conference with you, who determines the three and the four years?
Policy issue determined by the board.
Okay. So, and I think, not, you know, to indulge everyone here, I think Dr. Solkowski, the past superintendent, entertained the fact that he would like to see four years. And if I would have posed the same question to the current superintendent, he would jump on four years because it staggers elections and it staggers the, well, the election process, which means that there's more stability on the board, and that's what a, an administrator would like to see, more stability instead of having an election every year. So, I just would like to, in conclusion, just what I'm leading to, counselor, is that I'd like to have more dialogue, because if we're going to consider moving the election again, then we should consider, really, maybe moving the term to where it's more conducive and more effective for the district. And we do, we can, you know, we learn, possibly, we, you know, if we want to be transparent, allow that process in a referendum and take it out to the public and let them know, whether they would like to see May or November, and whether they would like to have us extend the term to four years to have more continuity and have staggered elections. So, I'm open for more dialogue and maybe more input from the public on this issue.
Mr. Lehman, any other comments or questions? Mr. Saldaña?
The only thing that I would say is I would caution the board on any action item concerning terms at this point, whether it's to go out for referendum or whatever, because it, there could be a open meetings issue on that as far as notice to the public that we were going to be discussing that particular issue.
I understand, thank you, Mr. Colunga.
It may be something to involve the policy chair to be a part of this discussion and decision as far as whether to move it, since he had previously had participation on the issues of, I don't know if Mr. Cortez would consider that as far as a different date for the item?
I agree with you, Mr. Colunga, that, you know, the policy chair should partake. This item, you know, has been postponed before and is coming back, and there's questions as to the wording of it, so I really do believe that this item should either be approved or voted down, and if it's voted down, then, I mean, that doesn't mean that when, after the policy chair participates, that a different item, perhaps a different wording, could be brought to the board, but this particular one is an old item, and personally, I think that we should either, that we should take care of it tonight. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Powers?
That, I think scares me a lot when the board attorney says we might be in violation, scares me. I, this is, this is a good one here, guys, I don't know.
But, but- Mr. Powers, my comment was only limited to the discussion of two- and four-year terms, that's the only caution that I had out there.
But with the election date, we're perfectly within our rights to discuss the election date.
Sure. November, May.
At this point, is there any more discussion? I mean, okay.
I'd ask that we call the question?
Well, we don't have to call the question if there's no more discussion. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, I just want to make sure, then you stand by your posting, that you're making a recommendation.
I think it was, it was clear, based on, based on what counsel said, that as long as we modified it, we were okay.
We haven't modified anything.
And if we're not okay, then, you know.
Just want to make sure.
Administration, counsel should, should let us know.
Don't you make a motion, discussion? I believe Mike, what Mike was trying to say, if I can, Dr. Escuelo is. The item says recommend, no, no, it's true, that recommendations are left to administration. However, there is a proper notice, if somebody wanted to make a motion saying, I make a motion to move, that's different than a recommendation, so I think that's where counsel was coming from.
So, to make a motion to move the election back to May eleventh? I'd make a motion, move the election back to May eleventh, from November eleventh.
I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, on a favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Aye.
Well, there is, any abstentions? Mr. Powers, you abstain? Okay, we have two in favor, three against, and one abstention. Okay, I don't remember that one from my Robert's class, it fails, okay, that's what I thought of, but I wasn't quite sure exactly why, because we didn't have four votes, I guess that explains, okay, so the motion fails. Moving on to item seventeen, discussion of possible action, allow administration to instruct board attorney to inquire if grand jury investigation has been requested with regard to the article in the Brown's Day Herald on Sunday, December tenth, two thousand six, about B I S D board trustees quarreling with vendor, Mr. Cortez.
Yes, Mr. President, I received a letter which is attached in the packet, and it really concerned me, given the fact that it was forwarded over to one of the district courts, and I for one would like to know if, based on this letter that I received a copy of, the initiation of grand jury was requested into that particular event in question. And I brought this forward so that I didn't feel I should take it upon myself and ask board attorney, hey, something happening, should we know about something? I figured we needed to bring it before the board, and if anything would happen, then we can all approve it as a whole, asking administration to instruct our board attorney to inquire whether or not the grand jury has, has been put together based on this information that we got.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escuelo. This item was brought over by Mr. Cortez. It's an item that's strictly up to you all as board members. I have not heard, when he brought me this, the first time I heard of anything. I've not heard of anything like this, at all.
Mr. Lehman?
Yeah, I have a comment for the superintendent. Mr. Cortez, you said you'd receive a copy, but on the carbon copies, I don't see your name or any administrator for BISD, so how did you come about this document?
Mr. Cortez?
It was just, you know, just given a copy to me.
Anonymously.
Oh, okay, it came anonymously. So Counselor, is this our, within our domain, or how do you handle this? What are your powers?
You can instruct me, okay? You are the client, and you can instruct me. However, just to give a very brief and very general synopsis of grand jury law, and I can assure you that criminal law is not my specialty. But grand juries are, by definition, inquisitorial and secret. Whether I, if I make an inquiry, they may, or they may not have to respond. They're under no obligation to let me know what investigation they're conducting. That's the bottom line, as far as how grand juries function, the fact that they function in secret, the fact that they have a very different standards in terms of what the general public is used to dealing with. It's inquisitorial by nature, and all sorts of evidence is permitted, and, but the key to the whole thing is that the proceedings are secret. I could go, if you all instruct me, I could go down there and ask, and they could say, we're not saying one way or the other, and there's nothing I could do about it at that point.
But, Mr. Cortez, you want to know, you want to know simply if this letter reached the grand jury, is that your question?
Uh, yeah, I mean, did you read the letter, Dr. Escuelo?
I read it, yes. Who's it from?
Yeah, who's Robert Whitman Salvant?
Your guess is as good as mine, but obviously, he makes no secret of letting us know who he is, he placed his phone number and address right on the cover.
I think he applied with a district council, I mean, has he applied for job? Because I know he's written articles, I mean...
Mr. Saldaña? I have no hate here.
Mr. Saldaña, can you enlighten us?
That's the personal issues.
Well, I mean, I see that, I, you know, it strikes me as rather strange that it would go to Mitten Murray Jr. Your mother worked for Mitten Murray, and your mother is a JP, so, I mean, pick up the phone and call your mother and see what's going on. I mean, I don't know. But, I mean, I understand what, you know, you're trying to embarrass this board again, and, you know, if this person wants to indeed file a complaint, he has. And I don't think it's this board's prerogative to find out, let the legal process take place, sir. And that's my recommendation. Now, if this board wants to instruct the attorney to get in a, I guess, can you do that, or, I mean, what is the process?
I already explained it, Mr. Lehman.
I'm sorry, explain it to me again.
Okay, I can go down there and ask, and they don't have to respond to me.
How many times have you done that in the past?
One, inquire about it, no, I've never done that.
Is it a customary practice by...
I wouldn't know, sir, if it's customary or not.
You haven't done it, you've never been asked to do it?
Not in this particular context, no. I mean, I have represented clients before a grand jury, but that's a separate issue.
So Mr. Salvantis should ask and find out properly.
Ask, I don't understand.
No, I mean, if he wrote the complaint, he should be asking whether they're going to do anything about it, that would be proper.
But he wants to do is up to him, Mr. Lehman, that's not up to me, I'm just...
Well, I don't think it's up to this board either, that's what I'm saying.
That's up to you all, whatever you all decide and vote on. All I'm saying is describing what the grand jury process is, and how the grand jury works. They do not have to affirm or deny that any investigation is being conducted.
Mr. Cortez?
Mr. Lehman, my intent is not to embarrass you or other members of this board, but when I read a letter like this, it concerns me. And if there is an inquiry into this board, I, for one, would like to know, I don't know about you, but I would like to know. And so if they're, if they're telling us that it's up to us, well, you know, obviously, each of us has an opinion, and I'm of the opinion that I would like to know if investigation has been initiated, whether they'll tell us or not, I don't know. I mean, obviously, I'm not an attorney either, but if simply asking is all that we're asking of administration, based on what counsel's saying, I don't see any harm in inquiring. If they're not going to tell us either way, well, we find nothing out, but...
I'm just surprised, Mr. Cortez, that you received an anonymous letter written by someone whom you don't know, and you place it on the agenda. But anyway, I guess that's your prerogative. Mr. Colunga, did you have comments?
I think the grand jury, you know, to refer something to the grand jury, I just wanted to ask a legal counsel on what is, what is it that a citizen can do in relation to any alleged violation of it? Texas Open Meetings, who hears that type of complaint?
Regarding your question, and I'm going to answer it generally, because not specifically to the Texas Open Meetings Act, but to any crime, whether it be a felony or a misdemeanor, the standard practice, and you will see it when you do go to the district attorney's office, is that district attorneys generally do not like to take complaints directly from the public. You'll see a sign outside the district attorney's office that says, if you have any complaints, you have to go to the appropriate law enforcement agency. That being, depending on the jurisdictional issue, it could be, it could be the Brownsville Police Department, the County Sheriff's Department, the Texas Rangers, or the Federal Bureau of Investigation, or they all could have concurrent jurisdiction, okay? At that point, the complaint, a complaint is usually taken by a law enforcement agency. They generally like to take a complaint based on firsthand information, but they can investigate on information and belief. They then conduct an investigation if they feel it's appropriate, they don't have to conduct an investigation if they feel that the complaint is not warranted, it's a discretionary call by the law enforcement agency. If they do investigate it, then they have another discretionary call at that point in time that they make, as to whether they want to refer it for prosecution or not. At that point, if they do decide to refer it to prosecution, they will send their file over to the district attorney's office, or to the Assistant United States Attorney, if it's a federal matter. At that point, another discretionary call comes, and that's by the district attorney, to decide whether to submit it to the grand jury or not. Once that discretionary call, and assuming that they do submit it to the grand jury, the grand jury votes and decides whether to indict the individual or not, or in the case of a misdemeanor, it's a little bit different. The discretionary call is strictly by the district attorney to return what is known as an information on an, which does not need to go to a grand jury, but merely is based on an affidavit by a police officer or other law enforcement official that has information and belief that a crime has been committed. That information then becomes the charging instrument under which the misdemeanor is prosecuted.
In addition to those agencies you referred to, can a citizen also complain to Texas Attorney General?
Yes, sir, they can. Those investigations are generally civil in nature. If they find that there is something, then the Texas Attorney General's Office generally will either conduct a special prosecution, or refer to local law enforcement agencies to go through the process I just described.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
I wasn't going to speak on this, but I have to. Mr. Cortez, you know, I've been on this board with Mr. Colunga for a long time, and, you know, we've gone through the Travel Gate incident, and I didn't go to Florida, I didn't go to San Francisco, but none of the board members put us on to inquire stuff like this. I agree, let the legal process take care of itself. I met with the district attorney on past issues. I'm one of the first ones to go step to the plate and go to the district attorney. I'm not afraid of that, because I know what I didn't do was wrong. But, yeah, you did the same thing I did. You went to a party, and you walked in, and when I was going in, you were walking out. How'd I know you didn't discuss business? You know? And then you say it's not personal, but then you're telling me you don't believe me. And I don't think we should be here, you know, I look at this, and I can show you, we just voted on an item, we go to Region One, hosted by a certain law firm, we just voted on them. This is Region One, hosted, a big dinner, Region One, and yet, you're harping on a subject that, now, I already said in my piece, man, I, I don't even, if those people walked in front of me, I don't even know who they were. When Mr. Gonzalez asked me who was, I said, I don't know. But to sit here and put here an item like this, and you want to talk about transparency? That's what we're discussing in the public, because technically, none of us, if we didn't, if one of us would have said no, one of us from last board meeting to now, we'd be an executive. And we're talking public, because, you know what, I have nothing to hide, none of this board has nothing to hide. If they did, then they'll, then it's a problem. The point is, why continue? You got elected, and all you've done is put agenda items on. You have never discussed how you're going to give teachers more money, how much money we're going to go give to campuses, or we're going to raise the ratio for student, raise the ratio for camp spending. We have yet to discuss any budgetary items on the total four hundred fifty-one million dollars, what we're going to do, or the tax rate.
Let's see what that has to do with item seventeen.
It does, Mr. Cortez, because you're wrong.
Powers has the floor.
You're wrong, Mr. Cortez. You got to work with us. We all get elected, and you can, I can find people that hate me, and vice versa, but you know what? Put everything aside, put all your political differences aside. These people need us working together. Not about who can find something wrong on somebody? Life is too short to be fighting, Ruben, it is. You know, I buried my dad last year, you think I care about this? You think I'm going to go break the law for some vendor who I don't even know? And contrary to your popular belief, Mr. Cortez, every meal you eat with a vendor is a potential vendor, because they're going to make a rebid again. Once that RFQ goes out, or an RFP, that same vendor will make a bid. It's all about code of ethics, we know what we can do. I raise my right hand, and I'm going to support this administration, the students, and I'm going to put our personal differences aside. I could have done that when I got elected in '04, came in here and fought, but that's no good. It's not good for anybody. We have to learn, you know, probably because I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I've been told I'm too nice, I don't know how to fight people, you know, but it's true, it is, I don't. Because I just know about humility and being humble. And I always tell people, there's two types of bullies in America, that they can do whatever they want. They're rich and powerful, and I'm neither one of that, and the guy who's six foot eight and three hundred pounds. So I have to learn to be humble. And I get people come to my office, the ones that voted against me, now listen to their complaints. And I sit there, and they can't believe I'm listening to them, because it's not about if you voted for me or not, it's about what's doing what's right. And I know you say you don't mean to embarrass the board, but something like this, it did. Me and Colunga went through a lot of turmoils back in those days. I never put Colunga on the agenda, or vice versa, never put me back then. Because you let the legal process take care of itself. They want to talk to others, Powers, they know where I'm at. I have gone today, and I'll do it again. But, Ruben, this is wrong, sir. And why you're doing this, I know it's personal, but it's not good for the district, sir, it's just not good for the district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powers, well said. Any other questions or comments?
Follow up, the only reason I asked about Mr. Salvantis, because he has there he's mediator and educator, so has he ever worked for the district, or he ever applied? I'm just curious.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lehman? Or from the board? Okay, this is discussion of possible action, so now I'll open the floor for a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'd move that we inquire, I mean, I'd like to know.
So your motion is to address this item as read, more specifically, or?
Yeah, more specifically.
Okay, motion, I have a motion by Mr. Cortez, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cortez, second by Mr. Colunga, all in favor, raise your right hand. I'll oppose. Motion.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so we had, let me see this again, all in favor? Okay, all oppose? I oppose, and Mr. Lehman abstains.
I think it's improper what he's doing.
The motion passes? Uh, if I may? Sure, Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Saldaña, consider yourself instructed.
Moving on to item ten, closed meeting, as pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two, and five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four, the board now goes to closed session. The board reconvenes after closed session. Moving on to item fifteen, which was moved, discussion reconsideration of possible action on real property acquisition from El Valle Investments L T D, do I have a motion? The item dies for lack of motion, Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Escuelo, members of the board. I know there's a lot of public scrutiny out there concerning this particular thing. We're going to move forward with it, however, I will instruct administration to get an independent appraisal for the record and to be put in our file.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item thirty, discussion consideration of possible action on the potential violation by board member or other board members of five-five-one-point-one-four-three of the Texas Government Code, reference on the Title V, Open Government. Do I have a motion? If there's no motion, the item dies for lack of motion. Moving on to announcements, Mr. Gonzalez?
The only announcement that I have is, don't forget next, the day after tomorrow, I guess, Thursday, BLA graduations at the cap. It's important, I think that we all need to try to be out there, unless we can, but that's an important one.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. If nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Lehman, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Galvano, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passed unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.